Would you please call roll?
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Schellpepper is joining us late. Alderman McConnell and Youngworth are out this evening excused. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
And Alderman Ellis.
Sort of here.
His planters, his planters are here and his sod is here.
Oh. Yeah, I saw him come in earlier, so I'll mark him present.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We're gonna be having a discussion today on the city green improvement. Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Herzog, you wanna kinda kick us off and give us a guideline?
All right, thank you, Mayor. As everybody's pulling stuff together, I'll just kinda recap where we are and how we're getting through tonight. So again, tonight, the meeting is being held for an open discussion. I believe the dialogue is allowed through the public to the council members, and I can be available to discuss many or answer some of the questions at hand. I do wanna bring up a couple things. Fortunately for, since the last meeting, Alderman Ellis was able to connect with the high school, and I thought that was a great opportunity. We shared some of the files that we had on our records with the high school in the effort to try to pull together quickly some small 3D modeling. So I left that up here. The group in the high school.
Yes!
Program was able to get that for Alderman Ellis and the group and the city to view.
Jason, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just start over there and pass it around to all the council members so they can take a detailed look at it? Council, when we're all done looking at it, I think it'd be nice just to have it circulate with all the people in the audience.
When we're done with this thing, can I give this to my kid? He'd love to play like Army Man on this thing.
Thank you.
Yep, so that was just follow-up from last meeting. Other than that, we've been engaged in a few of the small groups throughout the city, one of which, last Thursday, we were able to meet with a small group at the library and kinda discuss some of the thought on the village green here, city green. So what I'll do tonight is kinda update you with some of the discussions. This is the same presentation that we've seen for the last few months. And I can reference this if any questions or I need to make something more clear as we go through. Again, this is our existing village green overlaid with the new park concept. The area in which the bathrooms are being presented right now. This has been given to the city or proposed to the city through the private owners which occupy the et cetera building right now. So this is a combination men and women's bathroom. And that's the 3D model that's being shared around. So you can kinda get the image as it does have a, I don't know, some concepts that you need to kinda get your mind around as there is a staircase that's enclosed inside of there and the rooftops with the impact to the park itself. So the scaling is pretty close. It's a smaller scale. Like I mentioned before, you do have to kinda pull your mind around that scaling. So I'll pull some of this and leave this up. Mayor, I'll allow you to open the floor and, you know, the discussion. If I need to answer any questions, I can. But that's kinda the update in which the park has developed. So I'll leave that up to you.
Sounds good. Let's go ahead and get started. We have quite a few blue cards, so great, wonderful to have everybody here. If you would please, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address and the municipality in which you live. We'd like to try to keep the comments around three minutes, but the most important thing is that the council hears your opinion. So we'll be very lenient on that, but we also try to have a pretty hard stop within about an hour. That's how we've put this together. So we've had several other open sessions and gotten a lot of different feedback. So we'll go ahead and start off right away. We're gonna start with Lou Kavieski.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate the fact that you've had several sessions, which were supposed to be input sessions, not necessarily presentation sessions on what you're gonna do, but on gathering information from the public to see what the public would support in regards to the village green. I attended the first meeting at the community center. I took a video of that, shared that online, and that video has had over 5,000 views. And I've had several dozen people get ahold of me and express their input, some of which I'll share with you today. For the most part, I think everybody is ready for the village green to see a final approach in regards to what it could be and should be as a heart of this community as it is planned. I support the finishing of the boardwalk, the extended green space, and for the most part, most of the elements within there. I do have an issue with the bathrooms, and most of the people that I talked to shared those concerns. The public-private partnership associated with that potential has not been fully developed, and I understand that the direction is, it can't be fully developed until a direction is given, but it leaves open too much gray for a direction like that to be given, period. And its location isn't ideal for supporting large-scale events and multi-generational use. And that's really what we're looking at here. It's not a short-term plan. This is not something that'll be good enough for just a few years. This is something that'll stay for decades. We have major events from Fall Fest to the German Christmas market that one urinal and two stalls in the men's room isn't gonna make that big of a deal for those events. And we have representatives from the chamber here who put on those events, and they've even admitted that there would still need to be porta-johns being brought in. There's been discussion and effort and talk about putting a bathroom behind the city hall space in which the OPD used to occupy from the garages forward. That space currently has foundation, infrastructure, and the walls around it to support not just a urinal and two stalls, but bathrooms to scale for both women, men, and a family room. I think the community would like to see that. It is not being shown as an option. It has been talked about for years and through the public input sessions that were not being talked about yet today. So be honest with the community. There are people that are sitting here now that try to use the placement of the bathroom as a negotiating tool. It is not a negotiating tool for city staff to try to gain support. This is a community project paid for in large part by community tax dollars, and that is where the benefit should lay, to the community. I will ask you to move forward with landscaping and to remove the structure associated with the bathroom, not because the downtown doesn't need the bathroom, but because the bathroom doesn't need to be located there. It should be done quickly and to scale and in a spot that makes the most common sense from a taxpayer standpoint and from a use standpoint. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Heidi Latch, please.
I'm Heidi Latch. I live at 330 Thorough Drive in the city of Oconomowoc, and I own a building right downtown at 124 East Wisconsin and own Roots Coffee Shop inside that. Thank you for letting me speak today. For several years now, the idea of installing public restrooms on the village green has come before the city. And year after year, it continues to be voted down, even as restrooms are approved in less frequented parks around our city. I understand that cost, maintenance, and public need are often cited as a reason for hesitation. However, I believe that the perceived lack of concern from the public is being misunderstood. The reason you don't hear complaints from visitors of the village green isn't because the need isn't there. It's because those visitors are quietly relying on nearby businesses to meet that need. This creates a situation where the problem is simply shifted, not solved. Downtown business owners have become the default restroom providers for hundreds of people who enjoy that park every week. Their staff, their supplies, their cleaning budgets, even their sense of safety are impacted by constant public restroom traffic. In other parks where restrooms have been approved, there aren't nearby businesses to absorb that burden. So the city stepped up. Downtown businesses deserve that same consideration. I understand that the cost is higher for the village green location. However, donations from the downtown business district and pre-allocated money are available to offset that cost. We're not asking for an unnecessary luxury. We're asking for infrastructure that aligns with the level of use this park receives and supports both the public and our local businesses. A vibrant downtown should come with public amenities that match its activity. To welcome families, tourists, event visitors, and residents without basic facilities isn't consistent with the forward-looking image we strive to uphold. I also wanna talk about the idea of placing bathrooms behind the city hall. Right now, there's very little foot traffic going into the city hall to use the restrooms, while businesses near the village green are constantly getting people coming in just to use theirs. That really says something. If the new bathrooms are built behind city hall, they'll likely go unused or underused because people will have to walk past several businesses, downtown businesses, to get there. And instead, they'll just keep using the businesses' bathrooms like they do now. I urge you to consider not only the voices that have spoken, but also those who haven't because they assume that the current situation is acceptable. It is not the responsibility of private businesses to provide a public service indefinitely. This burden should be shared by the city through proper facilities. If we truly value our downtown and if we support our local businesses and if we're serious about creating a welcoming and accessible community space, then restrooms aren't an optional feature. They're a basic necessity. This decision isn't about facilities. It's about fairness, responsibility, and the long-term vision we hold for the city. I really respectfully urge you to vote yes.
Before you leave, I had one of the aldermen that raised his hands.
Yeah.
And council, I mean, this can be a two-way dialogue. We just have to stay focused or we'll be here until midnight. So if you have, if you wanna talk to anybody that comes up, signal me and we'll do that. So I know, Matt, you had signaled you wanted to ask that question. Go ahead.
Yeah, you basically answered it. My question was, do you think that restrooms placed by the city hall would be effective in alleviating the issue that occurs at your?
Yeah, I don't think so, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Kevin?
Lou, I had a question for you.
Let's start first with Heidi. We'll bring you back up, Lou, just a second. Jennifer, did you have it for Heidi?
I just wanna.
I said wanna bring them back and forth, no offense.
I just wanted to thank you for a point that you made, and I'm in favor of these now. And I was not in favor when I, a couple of years ago, when we were talking about Rockwell because it didn't make sense then. Now it does. But one point that you made that really kind of struck a chord was, we've approved, and I did not approve, the bathrooms at Rockwell Park. I was not for that because it doesn't make sense to have them there. It's not, you know, a high-trafficked area. But, you know, if we approved bathrooms in less-trafficked areas, why are we not approving bathrooms here? I think that was a great point, and I appreciate you making that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Lou, do you mind coming back up? Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. My question was, you had mentioned that you wanted to, you potentially would like to see the bathrooms in another location. Where was that?
In the garage space and the old PD space here at city hall. Before I left council, there was discussion about that location. There was a vote on this floor in support of that and getting the information to make that decision from this body. As far as I know, that information hasn't been made available, and I would equate that very much to what we were experiencing from the Collins Street parking lot to the police department and its potential locations. And the lack of information being provided to this body in order to make the right policy decisions, I think is still currently, unfortunately, part of the issue here. So the space behind city hall, just to further clarify, would support Oz Plaza with a door opening on that side and a door opening to the parking lot side, which would support not only the boardwalk, but the boat launch, the activity associated with the parking and the pedestrian traffic associated with that. And I believe it was two meetings ago, Sarah, who is part of the chamber now, even said she was surprised how many people would go to the chamber to use the bathrooms there. So while there is an argument of where the best location is for traffic, I believe it is, anybody here sees the amount of traffic that the Oz Plaza gets? It's quite a bit. It's a, it gets pictures daily. And I would continue to argue that it's not an either-or, but the decision to make the space by the city hall provides for a greater opportunity, for a greater benefit for the community that will be used.
Thank you.
Lynn Wright.
Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street, city of Oconomowoc. I've lived in Oconomowoc 21 years. Lou was great, and I agree with everything he said about the bathrooms in the old police department garage.
Lynn, can you speak up? I'm sorry.
Called the Sallyport. All right. So first of all, I'm not for moving ahead with the bathrooms where they're currently proposed and renovating the village green. Three and a half million dollars of taxpayer money is too much. I really don't think renovating the village green is necessary. I attended the community meeting and heard Jason explain the reasons why in his presentation. Destroying beautiful Stampcock concrete for ugly concrete just doesn't make sense, for one thing. At Rockwell, there was an issue with the concrete. Places still look like crap, okay? And as far as the bathrooms, Jennifer at Alderman-Clothman? I use those bathrooms all the time. Thousands of people walk around Fowler Lake on a daily basis. Those bathrooms should have actually been year-round bathrooms because people walk around that lake every single day, almost no matter what the weather is, okay? So those are very useful, and they're probably alleviating some people using the Roots and other downtown businesses' bathrooms. So disappointed to hear that. What I would be in favor of is pursuing the cost of renovating the old police department garage. My aldermen Spielberg and Mulder said it's called the Sallyport. This was proposed in the past, as Lou has explained, by Alderman but was not pursued. The current reason given by Alderman Spielberg is, quote, "We must preserve that space for expansion of offices at city hall." Why do we need to expand offices? The space where you pay bills is huge and has plenty of space for more offices should they be needed. Government should be reduced, not expanded. There also has been import, that input that the Sallyport is too far from village green events for kids because they would need to walk through a parking lot. Then their parents should accompany them. There will also still be porta-johns for big events. Oh, there will also be porta-johns for events. For big events, food trucks are in that parking lot. And for Fall Fest, the entire street is used. So those bathrooms in this building, it's, the location is fine. The reason given for the bathrooms to begin with is not for events because the porta-johns will need to be used no matter, be brought in no matter what. But they have been in previous meetings at the community center, that meeting that I attended. It's for day-to-day use since businesses don't want people using their bathrooms, although I feel that that's part of service to the people who are downtown, and it brings people into your businesses whether they purchase something or not. It gets its visibility. So the bathroom location in the Sallyport in city hall would not be an issue. They would be centrally located, plus no public-private partnership. I don't know how you can vote to move forward tonight to approve engineering costs without having a policy in place for public-private partnerships after the debacle with Buddies. You all discussed at a September council meeting creating such a policy to prevent that from happening again. Has this policy been created?
If you could kinda wrap up a little bit or come to closure, that would be great.
How do you know what amount the et cetera will agree to and what public access to the tables, plus all the other details? More discussions and written agreement needs to be worked out. It has been stated by Mayor Magnus and others that the TIF money of over $800,000 runs out soon. Does this really matter? Alderman Rosick, and I'd like you to answer this. In a discussion we had, you stated something that this wasn't necessarily a reason to rush to move forward. And if it ran out, so be it. Would you please clarify your position? I'm not a proponent of TIFs and TIDs. They add debt to the taxpayers and they take money away from the schools. Those are facts.
What's the question, Lynn? I don't understand the question.
Okay, so you said when, at the meeting, after the meeting where the $5 million was voted down back in March for the stage and all that at village green.
Yes, I remember.
Okay, that, you know, there was discussion about that $800,000. And you said it would be okay if that ran out. It wasn't a reason to rush to?
Agreed. It wasn't a reason to rush that project. I agree with that.
Right, but you still think the funds are needed?
I think the funds can be used for this project, yeah. But it wasn't a reason to rush into that one with $1 million of extra debt spending.
But you still felt that it needed to be done before the funds ran out?
I think the TIF funds are a good, useful tool that can be used for these type of projects with very, very limited impact on the taxpayer, correct? Like microscopic impact, like one-half of 1% impact, yes.
I need to see, I need to see that.
Can you keep moving on?
But has a policy been created for public-private partnership yet?
No.
No, there's no ordinance that states it and defines it.
So how can you move forward? After your discussion that you had.
That's a really good question.
At that last.
No, Lynn, that's a really good question.
Thank you.
And we were told this was a back-and-forth, so I'm happy to do a back-and-forth with you. I think that is a really good question. I think if we, we're not voting on this project tonight. What we're voting on is the chance to look at the funding, right? What the funding looks like. We're not doing engineering, we're doing RFP just to get ideas on what the funding will look like. During that time, we should work on what that policy should look like on a public-private partnership. I think that makes sense. It's a great time to start looking at that idea. But bear in mind, every little public-private partnership we've done is very different. Splash Pad, Skateboard Park, Chapman Park Barn. I mean, I could go through 10 different projects that are all very unique and very different. 517. Imagination Station. I mean, there's a million private-public partnerships we've done in just the last decade that are very, very different. So it's really hard to say, here's the policy, this is set in stone. It has to look like this box, and it can't change. So on this one, I think the biggest and most important thing to answer the overall question, which is, will we have a problem with this partnership? Is just making sure that we really dig deep into those details once we get the numbers. We're not there yet. The numbers may come back, it may be $5 million again. And I'll tell you, if it's $5 million and we have to spend $1 million in debt, that's gonna add $13 to everybody's tax bill. I'm voting no still. So if it means extra debt, if it means additional taxpayer money spent, I'm voting no. If it's, if we can do it within a reasonable amount of money that we have, park impact fees, TIF money, and with the private partnership with them helping build it, then I'm probably a yes. So if that answers some of those questions, I'm gonna be, you know, forefront in what I believe is right for the city, and that's what I believe is right for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Holly Schick. What's that? I mean, it's either pass or I don't know if we'll have enough time. I have a lot of cards.
Come on, Holly, don't pass. Let's do it. Come on.
If you wanna wait till the end, I'm happy to try. But if you'd prefer not to, that's okay. I just go through the thing here.
Holly Schick, 702 West Glenview Avenue, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin. I am a city resident for 39 years. I don't have too much different to say from what I said last time that I was here, but I want to say about, I really am not in favor of the way it appears to be set up with this private-public partnership at this time. I think it is too much in favor of one eatery in this town and not others, particularly with what's happening on the side of the building, not just the bathroom space. But I also wanna talk about the ADA portion and how people who are disabled cannot use, if we're still talking, a deck up on top that would be private and city-owned. The ADA portion really upsets me. Not by the toilet rooms, because I'm sure that they are acceptable to all standards for ADA, but once you're up on that rooftop, it is no longer accessible to all. And if there's city money, it needs to be. So that's what I have to say, pretty much what I've said before. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Wangard. Gonna pass? Okay. Jean Randolph. Oh, Joan, I'm sorry. That's all right.
I'm not really involved with too many people in Oconomowoc, but I'm just here as a resident, as a wife, a mother, a grandmother, great-grandmother. And over the years, I've enjoyed many things in Oconomowoc, like taking my bicycle around Lake Lebel until that got closed off. Going around Fowler Lake walking with the kids and everybody, many things. When we had to go to the bathroom, we probably would stop for lunch somewhere and probably just, you know, go there or maybe go to our homes, whatever. But I mean, there's bathrooms around Fowler Park. And coming around, well, even I'm sure there must be bathrooms at the police station and at city hall now. I mean, I've been here for, since 1979, and I've never used any of those bathrooms, but I've enjoyed parades and everything without having to go to the bathroom. So I don't know how, if everybody realizes how fortunate we are to have this corner lot come available and buildings don't get tore down and lake views don't come up very often. But I just hope everybody remembers to keep this so that the whole town can enjoy it and keep the view and don't fill in all the grass in all the area with things and if you can find a different place for the bathrooms. You know, I just, I just think, remember, you know, we all like grass. We all like parks. And more people, we just wanna keep it so everybody can enjoy it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much for coming. Laura Gibbs. Laura presented some concepts at the library meeting and had asked if she could present them tonight. I think it's a good idea, as they put a lot of time with some different ideas and options. So Laura, we're gonna turn it over to you and Jason, and we'll go from there. We need to try to keep it condensed as to the main points so people will understand the concept, if possible.
Okay. Laura Gibbs, 908 West Lebel Avenue in Oconomowoc. I've been in the city for 25.
Can you speak into the microphone a little more, Laura?
In the city for 25 years. I've been watching everything the council does for that whole time, just about. I know you guys have been back and forth and back and forth, go to, forth on bathrooms, and I know it's just a thorn in the side. A month ago, I came here saying I don't think we need bathrooms. I've really been listening to everything and reading everything. I now come with a different stance that we do need bathrooms. I think that people have gone back and forth on these things. I'm just gonna go to that next slide. I'm not going to read everything on here. I think everybody agrees we need ADA accessibility on the bathrooms that we put in. The point is, is that they're for regular use and that they're open year-round and that all large events still require porta-potties. What we're bringing to the city is basically two locations. It serves the city as it is now, and it serves the city as it grows. It integrates the city, it integrates... This, it's from, I'll get back to what I was just saying, but this really is just an illustration that shows what we're proposing is up to six stalls divided in two locations. Okay? The private-public partnership is proposing seven stalls at one location. For everyday use, that seven stalls is not what we need in the city. And it also forfeits too much of the city land and resources, views, everything. So this is an aerial view. This is really showing this whole back parking lot. It's got one plan, two locations. We integrate to serve the entire downtown. It was established at the last meeting, the meeting at September 16th, that the Chamber of Commerce has seven to 10 people coming in at that end of the city to use the bathrooms per week. That illustrates that there is a need at that end of the city to put these bathrooms. These bathrooms not only serve the green on the left, the old boardwalk, all of the city across the street there, but, and the boardwalk. The ones that would go at the other, the second location, which is shown on the picture at the right, unfortunately, yes, the witch and the bats would have to be located, relocated, but I think there's room for that. I don't think that's an obstacle. Also with Lou saying that there's room in that building, this is an idea for moving into this side of the neighborhood, if you want to put it that way. It serves, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, which is just right across the street. It also serves Fowler Plaque Lake Village, which is a developing part of the city. It serves the Fowler Lake Boat Launch and the playground and this end of the boardwalk. So there's, and then when we open up at the end, when we were talking about our celebrations getting bigger and we open into this back lot, it also then helps to bring the flow of everyone down to, you know, really both ends of the city, incorporating everything into one. Okay, so, oops. Sorry, technical difficulties here. Sorry, guys, I'm not accustomed to doing this. So this bathroom footprint, really, the, what I'm trying to show here is, is if you have two locations with basically the same footprint, you reduce your costs, your costs of the plan, the cost to build, the cost of the building materials, and you just get the whole thing done. We did two configurations for stalls. One is a two-stall that has two ADA-compliant stalls, as you see here. But if you want to do more, then we also presented a three-stall configuration. You can base whatever you want to move forward with based on what the needs you feel are to the city. Okay. Now we go to the exterior concepts. Basically, that's a stock photo as a sample that's on the bath and the bottom there, But you can see what it looks like from the side. We put windows in just to get some daylight. What we're doing is we want to be reflective of municipal buildings. So the, so the City Hall, the library, they all use this yellow brick with the red line through it. It's very attractive. It also says municipal right there. Municipal, not private, guys. The other thing I want to go back to is there's a lot of different things that can be looked at in this one picture. If you just look to the left picture, it has the et cetera building, then the utilities, and then the bathrooms. Now, we wanted to continue some goodwill, we're hoping, with the dumpster that you had, you know, I'm underst, I think that those get picked up every day, but we put the dumpsters there so that every day, every night, people can just walk out of the restaurant and put their garbage there. It maintains the back door, and we put the utilities there, but you know, that whole thing is now, it's shown here, is 13.6, 13 feet, 6 inches. But if you take that utility building and move it around, you can move it in between those two bathrooms, that whole thing could be pushed against the wall, and then you only come out 7 feet, 6 inches from the building. It really saves a lot of space. I really just want to say this last thing, and that is, by putting up, you can see where the wall would come out to here, by putting that wall up, it will definitely affect the lake views. There is no question about that. It definitely will have a large impact on that space. And we see, saw what happened at Buddies down on the beach. I don't think we want to get into that. Also, by putting that wall up, you hide the staircase, but that's not a big deal. Every staircase, every building like this needs a staircase like that for safety reasons. I think everybody understands that. But what you gain by putting that wall there is four stalls. That's it. Four stalls. It is not worth it, and it's not worth the city giving up its property or its rights in any way, shape, or form, in my humble opinion.
Laura, I have a question. I have a question for you over here. Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Oh, no, I can wait till she's done.
Oh, I thought you had a question, you want to jump in? I'm sorry. If you want to close up with your comments, that would be great. Does anybody have any questions for Laura? I just want to make a comment, Laura. It's really refreshing to have people come and actually present a solution. You did this at the library, you and I think a group of folks have done that, so my hat's off to you. And even this rendition, there's still some tweaks and changes that you've made, so thank you for your engagement as a citizen and a resident, because we're all looking for solutions. So thank you so much.
Right.
Any other comments for Laura?
Well, you just stole what I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was actually going to say, like, just, I appreciate...
It's okay, you can say it again.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate that you even started out by saying, I was not open-minded to the bathrooms, but then I became open-minded. And I mean, I think if you spent a half a day with the ladies at Roots, you would understand the need for bathrooms on this side of the downtown. But there is a need for bathrooms kind of on the other side, and while we don't want to put two, this two might be a pretty good, good solution. And the fact that you identified a problem and then brought a solution, because often people identify problems, tell us what not to do, but you gave us a solution, and I just, I can't tell you how refreshing that is, and I just have so much respect for you, Laura, for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I mean, I'm not going to go through this whole thing.
No, thanks.
I'm actually done here.
Thanks.
I do really think that anytime you go, yeah, but, go back to what the needs analysis and objective are and say, is this in our needs and objectives? And it is or it isn't? In my, in my view, in no scenario should the city be giving any, any of its property away to a private...
Alderman Shellpepper.
Will the slideshow back up?
Oh, sure. I was going to put the one back up for Jason.
Can we go back down? I think it's one slide. Yeah. Laura, is, is the one larger graphic, is that to scale in terms of how far it would come out, as to how the waste receptacle is currently placed, the trash dumpster?
Yeah, this actually is looking from the green at the side of the building. Okay? So we just, we covered up, I mean, those posts, I don't know really who it is to build the staircase or maintain it, but somebody really cheaped out when they just put the wood post there and didn't just dress them up and finish it, which I don't understand at all.
Chaz, that's a good question.
But yeah, this is, this is to scale. If you don't want, we broke it up so you can see where the bathroom space is, and you can see where the posts are. And some of the drawings, this is actually to provide for the dumpster. The whole, the bathrooms are shifted towards the green by three feet, and that is to allow for that dumpster space there. But...
Right, but just for like instance, like where the dumpster currently sits in that picture, if that bathroom was kind of plopped right in that same space right now, is that to scale where how far it would bump out?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's 14 feet. That comes out 16 feet. This comes out 14 feet approximately.
Ask Mark the same question, because I was trying to get that. He said, it looks like it's close from what we can see.
Right. It is.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Great.
I'll try to emphasize that more.
Let's actually just leave this one up and also put yours up as well in case, because we still have some more comments. I want to make sure we get to the people that would like to make some comments.
I'll show kind of where she's at.
Okay.
Just as reference. Laura saying it's 14 feet, this is 16, here's the trash enclosure. So we can kind of see where the footprint impact might be.
What's the, what's, from the edge of the building, et cetera, out in our, in the current city plans, how many feet is that?
This is 16 right here.
No, no, the other side going towards the green.
16.
16.
16.
Both sides.
Can I ask Jason a question quick?
Yep.
What are your general thoughts on this, Jason?
I like the idea that, you know, we're discussing what is the right sizing. Like I mentioned in the past, this idea came from the private owner to make this symmetrical and enclose the whole thing so that this could be closed up. The idea of trying to put bathrooms in this back area, you know, just a good idea in the, if you're looking for a smaller footprint, which we've discussed in the past, and I think years ago, we even had the same idea, same idea more on the side.
Right.
But it was, you know, the same thought is like the need of having one or two, maybe three, whatever can fit there is a good idea. You know, we would still have to find a location for trash. There's five dumpsters there right now. We would have this, you know, this idea would, you know, I haven't even validated some of these footprints here to carry this idea forward if one dumpster can even, you know, fit in the same footprint here and what that means for the rest. So, you know, I think it's a great starting point. It's discussion. That's the purpose of these meetings, is to kind of engage that thought, is something like this worth the effort tonight? Because we can take that type of idea and start to really look at those ideas.
What's the length, Jason? Can you go back up? I'm just having trouble reading our, on the city plans, is it 38 feet length-long?
38.
Is that 38? Okay. Do you have any idea how much square footage is for the whole village green?
So there, it's about 1.35 acre, so about 60,000 square feet.
So this current proposal is going into the village green by, if those numbers are right, about 608 square feet.
Sounds right. I'd have to subtract out the staircase, maybe?
So... Okay, so, so about 1% of the entire village green is taken up by these bathrooms? The city plan, it's 1%. Does that include the parking lot in our, in our 60,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Does it include the boardwalk? The new improved boardwalk? I'm just trying to get an idea like what we're really talking about here. I mean, conceptually, when I start thinking about projects, you know, and we're talking about taking up green space, we're talking about those things, you know, I think it's helpful to figure that out numerically in our head. So the current plan the city has takes up about 1% of the overall village green for bathroom structures. The other side doesn't really count because we already got trash enclosures there and, you know, we're, it's roughly the same. And that's parking lot, and that's ugly anyway. I just throw that out. That's a nothing burger. It's really, we're talking about the, what's being taken up in the space in village green. So it's about 1%. And the plans just presented, they also bop out too, right? By three or four feet from the building? Can you go to those numbers?
Which plan am I?
The plans that Laura presented.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get a baseline here.
Yeah, so it looks like, you know, she's, she's kind of carrying the current staircase.
That, the staircase stays there and is also becomes unusable space, right? So it's, it remains unusable space in the village green in our property.
Correct.
So what are we talking? Can, I can't, I can't see how much bumps out, actually.
It's probably still 18, 38 feet. Yeah. Because the staircase is...
It comes out 13 feet, 6 inches from the back of the et cetera building out.
Okay.
If you don't want to put the utilities there and instead want to put them in between the bathrooms or somewhere, they only really need to come out 6 foot, 7 foot, 6 inches.
But you still have to account for the staircase.
Well, the staircase could just stand alone. It could just stand alone. I mean, it could stand alone.
Yeah, it could be on the, where this landing is.
You could also take that whole thing, and you don't have to, you don't have to protrude three or four feet. We just chose to show that. I mean, when, when drawings would go to an architect, they would say, they should say to everybody, here's two or three options. We can put it here, we can put it there, you know, like what direction you want to shift it, where you want to put the utilities.
Yeah, I get it.
Do you want to include a dumpster?
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out, you know, dimensionally, what we're really talking about, lost space on the village green. So if we, if we, let's just presume that we were to go with your plan, we're talking about using about 200 square feet of village green space for that plan because it still bumps out. So now the nexus is about 400 square feet. The space under the stairway, which is also in our village green, right, and is also unusable space and kind of ugly, is also, and I don't know what that exactly is from your project, I'll throw out 100 square feet. I mean, I don't know what it is because I can't figure it out.
Matt, these are conceptual...
Right, I understand.
We took this from stock photos on the internet and, you know, copied and pasted.
No, you guys did a great job. It's a cool discussion point, for sure. Yeah.
I was just going to say, I mean, one design has a public-private partnership and the other doesn't. One's using city funds to create a patio for a restaurant, the other isn't. So I mean, we can't get too hung up on just square footage of the green. Overall, they're fundamentally completely two different concepts being presented.
They don't have to be. Well, that's true, except with the, without the patio, though, Chaz, on top of the thing, we're going to get no private funding at all. So we'll have to fund this completely.
How much funding are we getting from them? I haven't heard that yet.
Yeah.
Actually, I haven't heard a single number at all.
We won't know that until we get this out for RFP.
That's fair.
I just want to bring something up, something in the paper that I just saw today in the Freeman. And what it said is that they're not sure if the city's going to own the building or if the et cetera owners will own the building. And that is a, is a big surprise to, I think, me and probably all the public, but guess what the newspaper is putting out there? They're also saying that they will, you know, potentially lease the space that they create on the patio, but they also say they're, that they're negotiating space on the green for seating.
Yeah.
That they will lease, that they will lease in order to pay for the whatever.
You're totally right. I think there's a bunch of open questions that have to be...
There are a ton of open questions on the public-private partnership, because we don't even know if we can do it. We don't even know what the cost is.
Well, my ask is, don't move forward with getting any type of estimates on prices.
Well, we can't do anything until we know what it costs.
You have estimates from when you did the stage and the two bathrooms there. So you have a pretty good idea.
So I'm going to move on.
Why take more time, more, more...
Laura, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you just because we've been about a half hour.
Alderman Mulder, then Alderman Ellis, and then back to Chaz if you want to talk again. I wasn't sure. Okay. Alderman Mulder. Sorry, I was trying to get everybody's, everybody in, and I still have a few more cards.
This isn't really the purpose of us getting together tonight and discussing plans, but I, just following on with what Alderman Rosick was saying, you know, putting the one dumpster there, if we went with a plan like this, we would still need to move the dumpster corral and take up two or three spots of parking, because this one dumpster is not going to be enough. So that could bump back in. I think part of it also is that part of the vision is creating a universal facade all along the side of et cetera that ties together. That could still happen with this, but when you leave an exposed wooden staircase there, you know, that would be an eyesore. That could be cleaned up. I don't know. Thank you, Laura, for doing this. It's helpful to have more things to think about.
Alderman Ellis.
Thank you, Laura, for coming up and...
Thank you, Laura, for coming up and giving us options. I, I appreciate that. Okay, I, I, I really do appreciate that. My question is, if I can go back to your diagram, I gather this is it right here. Is there only one dumpster there now? I think there's two right now. How much? There's five.
There's five dumpsters that are in that back corral right now.
Okay, so if, not saying we would, but if we went with something similar to this, what would happen to those other four dumpsters? Where would they go?
We would have to find a location like Alderman Mulder was suggesting. There's a limited space, so it does have to probably sacrifice some parking stalls or another location or further away from all of the businesses and some green space. I guess that's the complicated piece of, you know, moving this location here is if it can't be accommodated here, you know, it, it will have to be sacrificed in another location.
So why, why could not we, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there, move the bathrooms over to the Oz Plaza?
We can. That's an option.
I mean, that's the decision.
It, it kind of makes sense to me because number one, they're tucked in. Number two, I think it's more accessible to all of the merchants, not just one, okay? And I think that that would potentially take the concern away as far as the dumpsters is concerned. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Are you done? Let's move on. I want to make sure we have three people that really would like, have filled out blue cards. Let's start with Bertis Galbreth. I want to make sure that we get everybody, give everybody the opportunity. Great conversations, although. Good conversations.
All right, Bertis Galbreth, 318 East Oak Street, also a business owner downtown at 127 East Wisconsin Avenue with Violet Table. Good evening, council. I wanted to start, say that I am not in this one. I'm in favor of the proposed bathrooms on the village green. I like the footprint of the village green. I like everything that has been done. Jason did a great job. I think all of the security issues that we need for today's events are all taking place, are, are taking and addressed in the, in the proposed plan. I think the footprint of the bathroom takes up very little space of the green. I, I agree with you. One percent of, of the whole village green. I think it's a, a great layout. We will never have enough bathrooms for any events. So, I mean, that, that's a moot point. We don't even need to talk about that. We, we're looking at bathrooms that we need and, and I understand that a lot of the citizens don't think we need bathrooms here. Well, they either use the restrooms at their house. I use my restroom at, at the house before I go for a walk and come back and use it when I, when I get back, or I know where I can use a restroom. What we're looking at is having restrooms for our visitors. And we need to be able to have restrooms for them so that they can come here more often, stay for longer, and, and feel welcome in the community.
Any questions for Bertis?
The only other thing that I would have, would say is that if we're going to have a partnership, and we've had numerous partnerships in the city of Oconomowoc with numerous individuals, none of them really went south. We had a bad taste in our mouth from one incident that just happened. If this, if we were here six months from now, we wouldn't even be talking about buddies. Because it'd be off everybody's head, off their, off their brain. So as long as we're smart with the partnership and cover everything, and if we look at it and say, not only who's in there right now, but what about the next occupant for that building? How are they gonna operate with that space there? Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Miller?
My name is Ellen Miller. I live at 173 North Lapham Street here in Oconomowoc. First of all, I really love the idea of having the bathrooms in City Hall. It's right by the public parking lot. I feel that when it was first brought up to put bathrooms next to et cetera, it's a natural bottleneck. Every, I've lived here about thirteen years, and every time there's a large group, it's always congested through there for when they have up the big tents, for the, the beer tents, whenever they have music. Everyone just kind of gets stuck right on that edge of et cetera. So to me, it made logical sense. You already have a structure. You probably have plumbing that could be hooked up for public bathrooms. I agree that it would be great for boaters in the summer and for people taking walks on the boardwalk. I think you could use signage that would be discreet to direct people to where the bathrooms would be. They could use the bathrooms before or after they go to the village green. Your village green is a really priceless treasure in this city, and it's well-used. And I, I think that using the space here in the City Hall makes sense to me. And I, you know, hopefully we would have enough room for bathrooms to accommodate handicap people, families, et cetera. Also, I just wanted to make a side note that the new bathrooms in Rockwell Park, I'm a biker and a hiker, and I use them often. I see other people using them. And I was hoping that they would be a year-round feature because there isn't anything right near there that the public can use. And let's see, I might have one or two other notes. I'm not real crazy about a public-private partnership. I, I don't like giving up that control. And I, I like the idea that if a bathroom were located here, it's right near our Wizard of Oz, beautiful little mural we have and all of the characters. That's such a photo op for tourists. I always see people in there, going there, and it would be convenient to direct people from that to the City Hall restrooms. Oh, and I also just personally would endorse extending the boardwalk. I heard they might do it a little bit around the edge, the western edge of Fowler Lake. I think that's a good idea to tie it in with the walk around the lake or to cross over and go over to City Beach. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one here is Sarah Nynman.
Good evening, everybody. Sarah Nynman, Chamber of Commerce. So I told you guys last time that I was here that I was gonna spend some time over the last two weeks talking to several business owners and people downtown to give you guys a little bit of feedback. My role in this has always been to be a helpful liaison between the businesses downtown that see most of this traffic, spend most of their time there, just to give you guys that feedback. So that is what I'm doing. I've stayed pretty far away from how you're gonna fund it, what it's going to look like. Obviously, I run fifteen days' worth of events down there, so I do spend a significant amount of time, also having two businesses down here. So I feel like you guys have been, used me as a great resource. What I found over the last couple of weeks in about forty-five people that I've talked to downtown is kind of consistent with what I've always said, that they are in favor of this plan. They, they do feel as if they want a restroom on the village green. I have one business owner that expressed that they would not approve of that, that they would prefer it be in, in City Hall. So that was one out of about forty-five, fifty that I did talk to, and I did not get around to everybody. Some people may avoid talking to me. I have no idea. But many that got back to me via email, which I sent out three, and then some that just I tracked down. So it, it stayed pretty consistent. They are, they are excited about having something on the village green to take and alleviate some of the stress that they feel in their own businesses. They do understand, as I do, that we will be putting porta-potties up for events. You know, again, the statement that I said weeks ago that continues to bubble up here is that I said five to ten people have shown up at the chamber office to use the bathroom, which, again, unless anybody's gonna sit out there with a ticker and count every time, we're not gonna have these accurate numbers. But for five to ten people, I would ask the girls down there at Roots and, and Marilyn over at the Play Gallery, how many people come into their building to five to ten that come down to the chamber office going, "Do you guys have facilities here anywhere?" They get thirty. I mean, I, they get so many down there. And, and I don't think that the fight that I have anymore, the communication that I have anymore, is to, to prove that we need a restroom. I feel like everybody here, for the most part, has agreed that we are, that we need a restroom. Now it's about the placement, the cost, the partnership. And you as elected officials, and we have a lot of resources. We have got architects, we've got urban planners, we've got a lot of experts that I'm sure you guys weigh in on and you guys consult with. And I think that's, I think those are decisions, and sometimes they're tough decisions that you guys are gonna have to make. But my role in this has always been to communicate and kind of be a liaison for the businesses. So I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about that. Some of the businesses did bring up a couple of good points, and I think that those can be talked about down the road because we're not there yet. They talked about, they brought up some good things. Is there gonna be insurance, you know, hoops to jump through for the upper deck of that? Is there gonna be a permit process for potential tables up there, like similar to a sidewalk? Where are the dumpsters gonna go? I can absolutely tell you that everybody that I talked to on the back end of, of the parking lot over here on Wisconsin, nobody died on a hill saying that they didn't want these bathrooms because they didn't want the dumpsters to move. They do realize that they are gonna be inconvenienced a bit to bring their trash somewhere. But the ones that I talked to along that strip were willing to take the trade-off of that to have the restrooms for the public.
Karen, speak over.
So we've pretty much decided, I think, that we need bathrooms where, how many, how much, whatever. What are your thoughts on Ms. Gibbs' conception as far as splitting those?
I, I think that there are a lot of individuals that are qualified to be talking about this and I think appreciating some feedback, but I think you guys have within your, you know, staff and within the, the architects that they've brought together, I think that, I think that you should lean into those drawings that we've, that we've created for the last eight years. I think two, the other question that came up a lot was like, if you put them in City Hall, how long are they gonna be open? City Hall closes at what time? Are these gonna be open, you know, later in the evening? Is it gonna be year-round? So that was, that was one of the other questions that kind of came up as well. Like, is it gonna be accessed, you know, all the time? Right now, there are restrooms in City Hall, and people are not coming in here in droves using them.
Yeah, I, I think we definitely need to put some more attention to the fact that those are in there during the day. I mean, obviously, City Hall's closed at night, weekends, whatever. That would not be accessible. Have you gotten any pushback from any of the business owners on this public-private partnership?
They have questions. They have questions. One in particular was not in favor of it. But I, you know, I tried to answer the questions as best as I could, and I think it sparked a lot of people's interest to kind of engage a little bit more. But I think the overall feeling is if we're gonna get restrooms and it improves the look of downtown and it's not gonna go on the tax bill, and we have some funds we're allocating, you get, you know, the funds are there, that in the big picture, they want to move forward with this.
Yeah, yeah.
They just want it to move.
I think that's a good way to look at it. We have to look at the big picture. We have to look long-term and look at the big picture. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've kind of come to the end of our time, but what I do want to do is, this is really important, that if we're gonna do this, we do it right. This has been going on for ten-plus years. You have a council that's a hundred percent engaged in trying to do what the, what the residents would like. A lot of different options have been presented. So at this point, if you have something new to add and can do it in about a minute, or you haven't spoken yourself and we can keep it fairly short, I would welcome you to come to the podium. Go ahead. I just want to make sure everybody feels as though they've been heard. And I was thinking about you, Holly, just making sure.
So there, the.
Can you please identify yourself for the record?
Sure. Lou Kavieski, 131 North Locust Street. There was a, a, a point made about access to bathrooms behind City Hall. The point of entry and, and exit would be segregated from City Hall itself, and those could be put on Meglocks associated with normal hours of operation that could extend past or before normal operations of City Hall. So it's not constrained to, to, to what currently goes on here. So.
If that was a decision, a council, I think you're a hundred percent right. That would be the way to do it, so I would agree.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments? Holly, one more? Now, Laura, I'm gonna let you come back up, but you gotta be short.
I made that way.
Okay. But I just want to make sure you got, because, and again, hats off to you.
I just wanted to clarify. I, I agree with Sarah. I think that what we have brought is concepts. They really need to, to lean into the professionals to make drawings depending on what it is you, you know, the parameters are.
Thank you.
Also, City Hall, we're not talking about inside City Hall where this building closes. We're talking about year-round.
Yeah.
Access all the time, not into City Hall.
Right. I understand. I was just, I was just trying to say that a lot of people don't realize that during the day, during those hours, that we have restrooms in here. I was just trying to clarify that.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Now, one thing I want to notice, note is I have not heard anything about the, the city green area itself. It seems like the community is in favor of the green. The issue are the restrooms and the private-public partnership. Does anyone here have any comments with regard to the green that you want to share with the council? Because our goal and our objective, if this moves forward, if you want, if you want to come up, just please come up to the microphone. But the goal is that if this does go, if the council decides later today, and it's gonna be, it's an item that they may or may not act on, it's up to them, later this evening, the goal and the recommendation is that if we go out for an RFP, we go out for two of them. One is for the bathroom structure and one is for the village green. Two separate bids. And the reason for that is we don't know, coming back to the public-private partnership, if it will cash flow for the property owner and for the city because we are not taking out debt to finance that. This council, and if anybody here in the council wants to, please speak up now that you want to put more debt on the city. But that, I want to make sure that you're really confident nobody wants to do that. That was really clear, still clear when those other bids came in, and they came in so much higher than what we expected.
I don't agree that that was crystal clear. That was a four-four, that was a.
That was a four-four vote, right?
I think we have the gal, the dark hair.
I'll speak to that one. Alderman Spielberg specifically stated that two hundred and some thousand dollars had been spent. So that would be throwing that money away. And she also said that she was for spending the five million dollars and that it was only eleven and some dollars, and that something was being eliminated from, like being paid off.
Yeah.
And if somebody can speak to that, I'd like information on that.
What we.
And that it was, that that would be replacing that money that would be going off. We as taxpayers, when things get paid off, we don't want things replacing them.
I hear your comment. I don't want to litigate what one Alderman does or the other.
What you said was not true, and that's what Matt made a statement, that it was crystal clear that they weren't for. So you were, that was not true.
Well, it was, because I've talked to the Aldermen and nobody wants to take out any debt.
Well, they did four months in March.
No, but since that point, what we tried to do was put a package.
You didn't clarify that.
And I want to clarify because the way you're interpreting is, is clear. I, I have no problem with that. What I'm saying, I've talked to these Aldermen, none of us want to take out any more debt. We just got surprised with a big cost, and that's why we're redoing it, so. But to go, I, I don't want to have this turn into a, an argumentative session at this point. Do we, I think there was a gal behind you, Bertis, one of you wanted to talk. I just want to give you the opportunity. I just want to make sure everybody has a moment. And if you please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Linda Gilson, and 401-2 North Lake Road, right here downtown. So I was not planning on talking. I was just wanted to come in and see, but just real quick, I, as far as the bathrooms, we won't go in there. It's just the city green. I, I really love it and that the improvement is, is wonderful. There's two different things. So I looked at it, at the design, and there isn't a, any type of a buffer or, or. So I looked at it, at the design, and there isn't a, any type of a buffer or, or an environmental system in order to, let's see, take out the contaminants from the parking lot, and then also, and it's prob, and so I was hoping that this might, this would probably add funds that's required to possibly, you know, expand the Village Green, or, I'm not sure of the details. But if you go into the Wisconsin DNR, it definitely states in there that there's a specific NR, which is Natural Resources Number, and it's NR 151. And it specifically states with parking lots or just stormwater runoff going into lakes, it says specifically how much of a buffer you need, what you need to do gives you options, and something as simple as a rain garden would do it. But it would be significant in the parking lot that we would have that's going into the lake.
So I'm going to get an answer for you that right away.
Okay.
Mr. Herzak.
Is there? Yeah.
Mr. Herzak is going to help you. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, the other one is, of course, with the ADA, the design, and I could be, I mean, from the new design of Village Green, there isn't a walkway. It's been taken out, which it's a good and bad thing. The only concern I have for that is that with, you can walk on your feet, you can go into the middle of Village Green and kind of enjoy it. But if you are an ADA, I mean, if you have, are limited to a wheelchair, or you can't really get into the center of Village Green and enjoy it. So that's the option, is that maybe put something to where just a ramp, I mean, something to where if somebody is confined to a wheelchair, or, or that they have the access to be able to go into the center of Village Green and to see everything. And I think it should be out of Green City Brick, so we can have the yellow brick road.
Jason will address those two issues, so thank you for sharing those great points.
Yeah, real quick. So the parking lot is not part of the project, but the city did improve the parking lot seven, eight years ago. And it did incorporate a stormwater management plan. They do have rain gardens that are in the islands and the parking stalls. They do go through rock beds, and they infiltrate, and then they go into a collection system that does go into the, the lake itself. Regarding the ADA accessibility, I think it's important to note that we have a, we have a relatively low access to our current site right now. We have a ramp at the four corners, and it's a real difficult ramp, but there is one at the boardwalk inside the parking lot. So the objective inside of the new plan was to improve the ADA accessibility in that open area of the new park for that very reason. And I will, in this area over here, is we're going to, we have to kind of manage a better, a good balance here of, you know, getting accessibility. In fact, you know, I've even rode a scooter or bike in this area, and there's no ramp here. You have to come onto the boardwalk, which isn't really desirable or illegal with a biker on that area. So that, that would get improved inside of this project. So, you know, that, that idea is kind of there. Another thing, this is, this is something I've just learned over time when building public projects. Stamped concrete is a little more difficult to manage with wheelchairs, strollers, and other small wheeled vehicles, which we have on the, on the boardwalk right now, or I should say, on the, on the park itself. So that was more of the look that you're seeing, a flatter surface, and these pavers, which are smoother-type surfaces. So we were looking at that. In fact, we removed crosswalks that have brick in them on Main Street. We put asphalt in there. So those types of small pieces kind of go towards that argument of the park here.
Great. Thank you. Holly's got a very, very quick. Thanks, Holly.
I, I just wanted to say that all disabilities do not involve wheelchairs and wheeled vehicles. My husband uses a walking stick, and he cannot walk on uneven ground, which most of this will be. So once again, he couldn't be in the center of that, but I'm sure he'd be happy to be around the paths.
Okay.
But don't go with a very narrow definition about what ADA means.
Right.
Thank you.
Karen?
Can I ask Jason a question? Jason, okay, you guys, we look at this from an aerial standpoint, and this is beautiful. You know, this big oval and all the grass and the green. But she brings up a good point. Tell me your first name again. You? Yeah. Linda. Linda brings up a good point. Have we thought about maybe putting a sidewalk through there?
Yeah. Well, we talked, if you remember, we actually talked a little bit about it. And one of the, one of the parts of our discussion a while back when we were looking at the green is, maybe we're best off looking for the path later to see where people are walking before we just go ahead and blast a sidewalk.
But is that something that we can do down the road that won't then be really expensive?
And I'll just give you two sides of this.
Okay.
One, yes, you get, oh shoot, you get, we kind of have this idea right now-
Yeah.
-of a circle. But like I mentioned before, people respect these hard surfaces, meaning that they don't set up their chairs in here, and they allow the movement of their, that's great. If you put more and more sidewalk in here, which I consistently hear, don't make this any more sidewalk, make this more green. So I think there's a trade-off of, you know, where do you want to apply that, you know, that route, if you will? Like, if you put a sidewalk through here, that means that square footage is now lost for seating, in my opinion.
Well, I understand, but it, it does make it more accessible for-
But you do gain the, you do gain that.
For a, a lot of individuals, like she said, not just wheelchair-bound.
Yep.
I just think it's something we should maybe consider.
Yep. I'm all for that. And just so you know, both sides of that.
Yep. Okay, good.
Kevin, you had a comment?
Yeah. I did. Now, if I, if I'm correct, the whole purpose is, we're just going to try to get an RFP to figure out what the costs are associated with both.
Yeah, and we're, and we're going to go through that later this evening, yes.
Okay.
The goal is to try to figure out whether we can afford to build it, because we're in a holding pattern.
Okay.
Or we're in a, in a pattern where we need to go back to the drawing board and redesign. But we don't want to spend a lot more money if it's not something we feel that we can do, so.
So the purpose of this now is just for purposing of communication, and then later we're going to make a decision on-
Yeah. What we're trying to do is hear from the community, which for the three listening sessions, that's, that was the design, and also gave the alderman time to talk to their constituents. And then we'll talk this evening, and the council will decide what direction you guys want to go. So we will be, Matt, very quickly, sir.
Hello, I'm Matt Spransky. I, I do the Twilight Concert stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that, no matter what going forward, that you keep in mind the ability to place a portable stage there.
Yes.
Right? Because it was really successful when we did that this year. It added a really nice visual element. There's plenty of power there, I understand. So I'd be all set.
Yep.
And I'm in favor of this.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
One more?
Jason Schultz, 1379 Crystal Lake Drive.
If you can speak into the microphone a little bit more, Jason.
Sure. This hasn't been proposed. I just kind of thought about this over the past month or so, but I know we have, you know, the building that's been torn down, and then there's a building sitting there by itself. And I just had a thought, and I know, well, I've heard it's for sale, maybe not publicly for sale or whatever, but, I mean, that could be an option with, depending on what's going on with that builder and, and the pile of rocks over there, to purchase, you know, that land and where that building is, take all that down, just make that added on to the park. So I just wanted to throw that out there and, and let you know, and, and that would be my opinion, because right now, there's already a building. You can make it smaller, so you're not taking away any views, you're not taking away anything. And we could add parking, you could add boardwalk, you could do, you know, pretty much whatever you want over there, so.
Great. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Last, last one.
Ellen Miller, 173 North Lapham. I just had a question about the diagram. In the current configuration, which is sort of like a Pentagon, I take it, right? Isn't the sort of shaded, more yellow one the current walkway?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you couldn't use four out of those sides, and then the top one where the red dot is? Couldn't that just be enlarged up to your arc at the top? Or is the, the problem the surface that is currently there?
I don't understand the question. I'm sorry.
Okay, if you look at the diagram up there-
I have the dot. Where would you like the dot?
Okay, right where it was, right on, okay. If you go left and right on that, that's an existing walkway, correct?
Correct.
If that were just taken out, and you connected the right side of it and did, went up to the top of the arc, and then came right back down to that section-
Oops.
Could you just, you know, utilize the current paving? It, it's almost identical to what you're proposing. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, can you just use the existing paving that's there on the left, bottom and right?
Sidewalk over here.
And just connect it to the top arc?
Yep. That is a possibility, yes. Thank you for your input. Council, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at this time. The council is now going to go over to Room 3, right next door, to work on their committee meeting. The council will start sometime between 7:30 and 8:00, depending upon how long the committee meetings go. If anybody wants to talk to me, I'm happy to stay here and entertain any questions. If anybody wants to talk to me, I'm happy to stay here and entertain any questions.
...
in very high wind pressure, these would twist and fall upon themselves. Again, here's an aerial photo showing all the adjacent properties. One of the things we ask about is coverage, you know, is this needed? Who's it going to serve? This is a coverage map, the existing coverage in yellow here, and this is the proposed site. You can see it turns to blue and the green. They have, you know, reliable, unreliable, and things. So they, it's definitely a need. They wouldn't be investing this type of money into this infrastructure if they felt that it wasn't needed. It would serve, you know, I-94 traffic, plus, you know, we had Marcus purchase this. We have the Pabst 59 project going in in the nearby area. We have the Costco down the road. This is all within a short proximity. We have a lot of new stuff under construction. Right here is the HSA building and the WISPAK building in here. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening in this area. We asked them to provide some photo sims. They provided those. You can see, you know, there's existing light poles out there that are fairly tall. One Plan Commissioner said, you know, this is probably one of the better sites in the whole city. The pole blends in with the light poles that are out there. These were taken at various locations. Here's some more from the adjacent property, and this is I-94 image of what it would look like. I did prepare a conditional use permit. Again, this is not on the agenda, but there's conditions that we can, as a city, put on these. I didn't include the entire permit here, but there's access, fencing, lighting, landscaping, signage, drainage, fire protection, lawful operation, all those pretty standard conditions. Now, at the Plan Commission meeting, there was concerns. I talked about this line. On one of the drawings, it said there was a recording number. I went and I pulled that recording number from the Register of Deeds office. It does say a 50-foot building setback. I think the word "building" is a key there. I enlarged that area of the document. It says, "The following minimum street setback shall apply for all building sites," and it says, "front or street yard, not less than 50 feet from the right-of-way of all highways." So, you know, that's, we're still working through that. The applicant did say, well, I can move it outside of that 50-foot area. Here's an example, but staff has not reviewed this configuration. It changes it from a square compound to more of a rectangle. There is an easement that they would have to stay out of right here, and this is a stormwater pond, so we don't know how that would impact that. So the Plan Commission had a concern, but this was presented to me the day of the meeting, and I thought, well, we could maybe, you know, work with that. And this needs to be finalized. So this was submitted, you know, just a week ago or so, showing a new location. The Plan Commission also discussed adding a condition regarding assurances for future tower removal in the future. You know, as technology changes, we all hear about satellite technology potentially taking over, you know. I don't think a tower company would invest if they thought this wasn't going to be good technology. But I wanted, I pulled these photos off the Internet. I wanted the council to see what type of infrastructure is these take. I mean, that's all rebar. They fill it with concrete. Once this is in, it's pretty much not moving. Now, the quote I got from the applicants who are here, they said, "Diamond does have a bond and removal of personal property language in their agreement with DCRE Holdings," that's the property owner, "which includes removal of the foundation to two feet below the surface level upon termination date of the tower agreement." So they would remove it, the tower company, up to two feet below elevation. Well, you can see the two feet. This is all much further lower than that. We could put a condition in there when it's on the agenda for action, that, you know, we want more than that removed. Or, one of the Plan Commissioners said, you know, that's between the property owner and the tower company. What difference does it make to the city? So that's something to think about. Now, it was interesting, the Plan Commission sent this request forward with no recommendation. It was a two-to-two vote for the tower application as presented. Two members of the Plan Commission were in favor, two were against, two abstained, and one member was absent for the seven members. So it was quite an interesting discussion. There was a lot of issues, the setback, the potential removal, things that I'm working through with the applicant, but they sent it on to let you guys decide. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so there won't be discussions back and forth, and there's no action on it. So if anybody would like, in the audience, would like to make a comment, please come forward. Thank you for the blue card. Please state your name. Oh, thank you, Lynn.
zoning district. If approved, the applicant would be allowed to construct and operate a 169-foot-tall pole tower that is being constructed to support up to four cellular antenna arrays. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor, Common Council. We have a cell tower application. This is a conditional use permit request at the 1101 Blue Ribbon Circle North. This is the stadium that we have. I have the location map up on the screen. The proposed location of the tower is approximately where that red dot is. It's to build a 165-foot monopole tower. We haven't had one of these requests in some time. We've got about five or six other towers throughout the city. This is on for a public hearing only. This is not on the agenda for action later this evening. So it's just to get feedback tonight. And there's some issues that we're still looking into that were brought up by the Plan Commission. I'll get into those. But with a CUP, we do have standards listed. And, you know, I'm not going to go through all of these, but they do, in my opinion, conform with all of these requirements. Some of these do not, are not applicable to this one. Like, for example, F, the setback is when it says when it's adjacent to a single-family residential use. This one's obviously not. There's some historical stuff in here as well, like shall not be placed within 500 feet of a historic structure. That's not applicable. So I think they do conform to the requirements. Before putting this on the agenda, we did have permission letters from the property owner as well as PAPFarms. The request is not from either one of these entities. It's from a tower company that would have entered into an easement with the property owner, which is the Doc Hounds. Sunny Bando is here this evening. As the applicant, PAPFarms wrote a letter that they don't object as well. So the tower, they, we did review the site plans showing that it's up along I-94 here. It'd be tucked in this corner. There's some landscaping. There's a stormwater pond in this area. There was this line shown, and we're going to talk about that a little bit here, that was drew some concerns raised by the Plan Commission. But the, I'm sorry, the, the access would be, they would have an easement through the parking lot, and then they would go on to a gravel area going back to the site. And there would be a compound that's 50 by 50. It would be fenced and landscaped back there. This is showing the fencing down here with the fencing, and there'd be barbed wire for security purposes on top. There's a compound. Here's the tower and showing the dimensions and then future leasable areas for other tower carriers. There would be a landscaping on two sides. The other sides are already landscaped, so there would be some evergreens for year-round screening of that fence. This is what the tower would look like, as Mayor said, 165 feet tall with a lightning rod on top. It would not have a blinking or a light that would be on all the time because it's under the 200-foot threshold for that. It has been designed structurally for up to four carriers. That should be adequate for it. We do have a fall zone. That's one of the standards. It talks about, this is a stamped engineering letter for this tower, prepared in 2025 for the 165-foot monopole. And it does say it would effectively result in a fall radius of 30 feet or less, basically in very high winds pressure. These would twist and fall upon themselves. Again, here's an aerial photo showing all the adjacent properties. One of the things we ask about is coverage, you know, is this needed? Who's it going to serve? This is a coverage map, the existing coverage in yellow here. And this is the proposed site. You can see it turns to blue and the green. They have, you know, reliable, unreliable, and things. So they, it's definitely a need. They wouldn't be investing this type of money into this infrastructure if they felt that it wasn't needed. It would serve, you know, I-94 traffic, plus, you know, we had Marcus purchase this. We have the PAPF59 project going in in the nearby area. We have the Costco down the road. This is all within a short proximity. We have a lot of new stuff under construction right here. It's the HSA building and the Wisco, Wispac building in here. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening in this area. We asked them to provide some photo sims. They provided those. You can see, you know, there's existing light poles out there that are fairly tall. One Plan Commissioner said, you know, this is probably one of the better sites in the whole city. The pole blends in with the light poles that are out there. These were taken at various locations. Here's some more from the adjacent property. And this is I-94 image of what it would look like. I did prepare a conditional use permit. Again, this is not on the agenda, but there's conditions that we can, as a city, put on these. I didn't include the entire permit here, but there's access, fencing, lighting, landscaping, signage, drainage, fire protection, you know, lawful operation, all those pretty standard conditions. Now, at the Plan Commission meeting, there was concerns. I talked about this line on one of the drawings that said there was a recording number. I went and I pulled that recording number from the Register of Deeds office. It does say a 50-foot building setback. I think the word "building" is a key there. I enlarged that area of the document. It says, "The following minimum street setback shall apply for all building sites." And it says, "Front or street yard, not less than 50 feet from the right-of-way of all highways." So, you know, that's, we're still working through that. The applicant did say, "Well, I can move it outside of that 50-foot area." Here's an example, but staff has not reviewed this configuration. It changes it from a square compound to more of a rectangle. There is an easement that they would have to stay out of right here, and this is a stormwater pond, so we don't know how that would impact that. So the Plan Commission had a concern, but this was presented to me the day of the meeting. And I thought, well, we could maybe, you know, work with that. And this needs to be finalized. So this was submitted, you know, just a week ago or so, showing a new location. The Plan Commission also discussed adding a condition regarding assurances for future tower removal in the future. You know, as technologies changes, we all hear about satellite technology potentially taking over, you know. I don't think a tower company would invest if they thought this wasn't going to be good technology. But I wanted, I pulled these photos off the internet. I wanted the council to see what type of infrastructure is these take. I mean, that's all rebar. They fill it with concrete. Once this is in, it's pretty much not moving. Now, the quote I got from the applicants who are here, they said, "Diamond does have a bond and removal of personal property language in their agreement with DCRE Holdings," that's the property owner, "which includes removal of the foundation to two feet below the surface level upon termination date of the tower agreement." So they would remove it, the tower company, up to two feet below elevation. Well, you can see the two feet. This is all much further lower than that. We could put a condition in there when it's on the agenda for action that, you know, we want more than that removed. Or, one of the Plan Commissioners said, you know, "That's between the property owner and the tower company. What difference does it make for the city?" So that's something to think about. Now, it was interesting, the Plan Commission sent this request forward with no recommendation. It was a two-to-two vote for the tower application as presented. Two members of the Plan Commission were in favor, two were against, two abstained, and one member was absent for the seven members. So it was quite an interesting discussion. There was a lot of issues, the setback, the potential removal, things that I'm working through with the applicant, but they sent it on to let you guys decide. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so there won't be discussions back and forth, and there's no action on it. So if anybody would like, in the audience, would like to make a comment, please come forward. Thank you for the blue card. Please state your name. Oh, thank you, Lynn. Please, on this topic alone, please state your name, address, and municipality in which you live.
Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street, City of Economok. Okay, so I didn't, of course, know about this till I came for the Village Green thing. So I don't have detailed information, but I will get. I'm glad that there's no action on this. But this needs to be looked at really, really closely, you guys. I have a doctor who came to where I work, where there is a cellphone, cellphone, major cellphone, to tell me the radiation from that to, in the building where I work, is Chernobyl-level radiation. And I cut back my hours there because I have Lyme's disease, and Lyme's can get triggered by radiation. So first question is, is how much radiation? Radiation causes cancer and all kinds of major brain tumors, all kinds of stuff, which hopefully you all know. Is how much radiation will go out from this tower and how far? And what really are the ramifications of this? The reason the property owners want this, and I hope they can come up here and speak on this because I think you said they're here, is how much are they getting paid from the cellphone tower? And is the city forgiving them all these conditional use or whatever you want to call it, all these permits and everything? Are they going to get any money from it? Or does it all go? Cellphone towers, from my understanding, and please correct me, is that they let it be on their property because they're going to make money. And this is where Doc Hound Stadium, all those kids, all those people, if you don't think that that will have an impact, a lot of, a lot of research needs to be done. Please, do your research, each and every one of you. Do your research, and I will do mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this topic? No further comments on this public hearing? At this time, we'll close the public hearing and move on to our next agenda item. Council, without objection, I would request we bring forth item 10A, the WPPI presentation by Tom Hanrahan. Any objections?
No.
Okay, no objections, then we'll move on to item 10A. And we're going to have a little presentation about our power company. Tom. You've changed, Tom.
No, I'm going to introduce Tom, and I'm going to get his presentation up.
Okay, great, thank you. I didn't know. This is Ken Kari, for those that you don't know. You run as our utility.
Kevin Kari, the utility manager for Yore, Economok Utilities.
Yeah.
And Tom is here today. He contacted me back in June, I believe, and offered to do a presentation to our governing body, which could have either been the Utility Committee or the Common Council. And I invited him to the Common Council meeting for today to do a presentation on the state of WPPI and what they do for us, and just a overall presentation, so you understand what Wisconsin Public Power is all about. Tom is the general counsel for WPPI, so I'll get this set up, and Tom can give us his show.
Well, welcome, Tom. Thank you for coming forth.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for having me here. I really appreciate it. I've been with WPPI about 20 years. I've been doing these visits with.
Can you lift up your microphone a little bit?
Sure. I've been doing these visits with member governing bodies for probably 15 years. This is the first time I'm in Economok, so really pleased to be with you here tonight. Others, others of my colleagues have been here in the past. This is part of a regular effort we have to get out and periodically meet with our member governing bodies, elected and appointed officials, to let you know what we're doing with your investment in WPPI energy, the issues that we're currently working on, and sort of what we see coming in the future. So that's my purpose for being here tonight. See if I can manage to not goof this up. Great. So just a little background, refresher for some of you. Others of you might be sort of the first time hearing about WPPI structures. So I'll just briefly walk through here sort of who we are. So you'll see on the left of the slide some dots in northeast Iowa, the Upper Peninsula of Michigan and Wisconsin. Each one of those dots represents one of our member communities. We have 51 total, so primarily located in Wisconsin. We were formed back in 1980. A number of municipalities, including Economok, actually got together and were looking for a way to more effectively negotiate power purchase agreements with the investor on utilities from whom they, at that time, bought their power. Wasn't a lot of bargaining power for individual municipalities on their own buying power. So looking for a little bit of strength in numbers there in those negotiations, but also looking ultimately to be able to buy into and own their own generation resources, have the ability to buy into a larger utility-scale project, get the economies of scale of larger projects, and be able to save their customers money. And so after a lot of effort, WPPI was formed. We're now in our 45th year. And like we were at the beginning, and we still are today, which is we're managed, overseen, and governed by our members. So each one of our member communities has a director and a board of directors. In Economok's case, it's Kevin. Your alternate is Mark. Every community appoints their own folks to the board of directors. We had our annual meeting in Green Bay in September. We're going to have our final meeting of the board in December, where we'll go through our budget for 2026 and our rates. We have more regular meetings with what we call our executive committee. That's an 11-member subset of the board. Those folks are all elected by the board of directors every September, so we just had an election in hand. We have four folks elected, or reelected to our executive committee. And they provide more of the sort of regular policy direction and oversight of staff at WPPI. So just a few numbers to give you a sense of how large WPPI is and how large Economok is in relation to WPPI. We're about 1,050-megawatt peaking utility. For frame of reference, Economok is about a 58-megawatt utility. So one of our larger members, I think actually our fifth-largest member in terms of purchased power. As a wholesale power utility, we're roughly the same size as Darrell and Electric Co-op. They're a generation and transmission co-op, sort of the WPPI equivalent on the co-op side. They're headquartered in La Crosse. And we're a bit larger than Madison Gas and Electric. They're an investor and utility that serves all of the city of Madison and some of the surrounding area. Annual budget of about $500 million. And we, as I mentioned, we have member involvement at every level. We really exist to serve our members, and we do that through direction from our board and from our executive committee. But we also have a number of advisory committees. We've got two, two folks from the Economok Utilities staff who serve on respectively our rate services advisory group and our distribution services advisory group. Those groups meet regularly and talk through potential programs or services that WPPI could provide our members, give us feedback on the existing services that we provide, again, to make them the best they can be for serving our members. So with that sort of reminder and background, I'm just going to jump into our power supply portfolio. This slide is a, reflects our major current power supply resources. And so just a couple of takeaways from this slide. First, you'll see that, as I mentioned, we have members in three states, and we have power supply resources, as you see, in four states. Our portfolio is very diverse in several respects, geography being one, and the other would be in the type of fuel that's used at our resources. So if you start up in the north-central Minnesota area there, you'll see the Boswell plant. That's the very first generation project that WPPI had an ownership interest in. We own 20% of a coal plant in partnership with Minnesota Power. We purchased our ownership share back in 1990, so that's been a real workhorse and sort of the core of our fleet. We have another ownership interest in a coal plant in southeastern Wisconsin. That's the Elm Road Generating Station. You'll see that right there at the bottom, Wisconsin. That's in Oak Creek, right on Lake Michigan. Again, we own a portion of that plant. The primary owner is Wisconsin Electric Power Company, and the other smaller owner is Madison Gas and Electric. Rounding out owned resources, if you look a little bit up from Elm Road, you'll see South Fond du Lac and Island Street. Those are natural gas peaking plants. The Island Street facility is actually located in a substation in the city of Kocana. And that unit is owned and operated by Kocana Utilities, another one of our WPPI members. The South Fond du Lac unit is at a site co-owned with Wisconsin Power and Light, our line energy. They own two gas-peaking units there. We own the other two. And then you'll see a number of wind projects. Those are purchased power agreements. We don't own those resources generally for a not-for-profit utility like WPPI that doesn't pay income tax. We historically haven't been able to take advantage of production and investment tax credits that are offered by the federal government for those kinds of projects. So instead of owning them, we own them with partners who can get the benefit of those, and we share in some of the savings there. So a number of wind projects in Iowa, you'll see one in Illinois. That's our newest wind project, a couple in Wisconsin. And then right up at the top in Wisconsin, you'll see two other resources. One is the Point Beach Nuclear Plant. So we take power under a purchase agreement from the owner of the Point Beach Nuclear Plant for nuclear power. And then we have the entire output of the Point Beach Solar Facility, which, again, is owned by the same owners, the nuclear plant, and that's a power purchase agreement where we take solar power. So again, diversity in fuel type, in geography. The other diversity we have is in term of ownership. So we try not to have too many of our resources all come up or expire at the same time. That gives us flexibility to be always sort of in the market looking for resources. It never puts us in a position where we're going to be over-reliant on purchasing a large slice of our resource needs at one particular time where the markets might not be advantageous to us. So it's a little bit like the analogy is your 401K, where you try to mix up your investments. You try to mix up the term of your investments so that you sort of smooth out sort of dollar-cost average your investments. And for us, what we've seen is a stable portfolio has meant, for more than the last decade, always stable costs. So two lines on this slide. The top line is our actual per-megawatt-hour costs to our members for power going back to 2012. That's the top line. And you'll see, other than a blip there in 2022, when we had a couple of major unit outages in, at a time when market energy prices were very high due to very high natural gas prices, we saw a bit of a peak, otherwise very steady and adjusted for inflation, which is the bottom line, our costs are actually below where they were in 2012. So that's been a great run. I would say we're seeing additional cost pressures in the market now. I'll talk a little bit about our upcoming needs and what we're looking at and what that means for us. So one of the ways we, we look at power supply resources is, again, we want to be diverse in the fuel supply we have. Because we're, while we're a good-sized utility, we're quite a bit smaller than the other investor on utilities in Wisconsin. We can't by ourselves own a very large coal plant or a very large natural gas plant. We typically have to partner with folks. And that means that we can't always pick the site that we would want. We have to be opportunistic. And sometimes that means the site is remote. And you will see, I showed you the Boswell plant up in Minnesota. And that means that we rely on the transmission grid. And so we're, we are strong proponents of having a reliable, well-functioning transmission grid that allows us to bring in power from, from multiple sources. Just gives us a lot of options. In terms of looking forward and power supply needs that we have, we're fairly well-balanced currently. We have some small needs, but as we look out to 2033, so the next seven or eight years, we have about a 400-megawatt need over that time period. So we're not going to wait until December of 2032 to fill that need. We've already started that process now. We've done, we did a request for proposals for resources last year. We did another one this year. And as we always do, we're talking with other industry partners who we currently work with and others that we might have the opportunity to work with on opportunities for us to jointly own resources or to purchase power from, from other resources. We're really looking at this time at all kinds of resources. We've gotten back some interesting proposals for renewables projects. We have some interesting discussions regarding some natural gas plants. And what we're seeing is it's, it's really important now, more than it has been in the recent past, that we have resources that we can turn on when we need them. So if you think of the wind and the solar resources we have, they have value in our portfolio, but we wouldn't want to just rely on those because, you know, there are periods of the year, and there are obviously periods of the day when the sun is going down, solar's coming off the system, and you need to bring other resources on to be able to serve, serve our members' power needs. So we want that balance, and we're continuing to look at all options available to us. The other thing we do is we look for opportunities to invest in the transmission grid. And you might ask why? Well, transmission costs are roughly 15% to 16% of our total costs that we, that we pass along to our members. So it's a, it's a big part of our costs. And if we can invest in transmission and earn a return, we can use that return to offset the costs to serve members. So we've been an owner of the American Transmission Company, which owns the transmission grid for roughly half to two-thirds of the state of Wisconsin. We've been an owner since that entity was formed in 2000. And again, we use the earnings that we get. We just plow them right back into offsetting costs that our members would otherwise have to pay. And we continue those efforts because we found that it's a really stable and good investment, and again, allows us to moderate some of those cost impacts of rising transmission So when I talk about the needs we have, the big wildcard is data centers. Anybody here, maybe I should ask, has anybody here not read about data centers in the last month? I mean, it's almost unavoidable, right? Well, we're seeing a lot of interest in member communities. I would say a lot of it is kicking the tires at this stage, but we have some potential projects that are moving a little bit down the road. And that creates another very interesting set of issues for us to work through when we think about what our power supply needs are going to be and how we're going to serve them. You know, the sort of key principles we have when we think about data centers is we want to be able to reliably serve data center customers at a reasonable rate, but we don't want to put undue risk on the other utility customers in the community. And we don't want to put undue risk on the other members of the WPPI system if the customers, data center customers' load doesn't materialize, or the customer, for whatever reason, goes out of business or shuts down its operations. So there's a lot to think about there, but, but the scope of these projects is really, really large. I will bet you've heard about the projects in Port Washington. There's a project in Beaver Dam and a couple of announced projects in southeastern Wisconsin in Racine County, for example. I mentioned that 1,000-megawatt system that WPPI is. If, if those projects are to come online, there'll be many multiples larger than WPPI's entire system. So you can imagine a lot of risk there, and a lot of thought goes into how if a utility data center wants to get served by one of the WPPI member utilities, how we can work with them to figure out how to do that. The other thing it does is it puts pressure on costs. So we've, you know, are planning for our existing sort of native load, if you will. But now we have to contend with, and the state has to contend with, and the country has to contend with this possible huge additional power supply need coming really quickly. And that's putting pressure on costs for generators, for other power, power system components, and sort of driving up costs. So that's one of the things that is a result of all of that interest and something that we're, we're seeing a little bit as we look at what our costs might be going forward. We expect that for 2026, for example, our cost increase is going to be a bit higher than it has been, you know, well, a little bit higher than it's been over the last, you know, dozen years or so, more than the rate of inflation, somewhere around in the 5% range, which for us is a pretty large increase if you, if you look back in time. The good news is, though, that the way WPPI's rates are structured, our members pay our own. our members pay our actual costs. So our budget, if you think about it, is really just a projection. And if we incur costs that are below what our budget is, those savings just go right back to members through our rates. So there's no, other than a month or two lag for, to accommodate billing and, and that cycle, those savings go right back to members. And if we, if we under-budget and our costs are higher, the, the same is true. But that allows us to be pretty lean. We don't have to build any huge margins into our costs to members to cover unforeseen circumstances. So again, we're, we're working as, as best we can to understand the impacts and working to keep member costs reasonable. I just want to talk a little bit about the services we provide. I talked a lot about data centers already. We do rate services for our members. So our members all, if they want to increase the rates, have to go to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. I manage a staff at WPPI that is devoted to doing rate cases at the PSC at any given time. We have between half a dozen and a dozen cases going on. That's an important service and, and is one that is really, again, focused on data centers. There are other resources that we provide that are really the outcome of discussions with members. I mentioned these advisory groups. A lot of these ideas have come out of advisory groups. And a lot of them have come out of conversations with members on what's working with them that might be able to work elsewhere. And there's a couple programs that we provide now that Econamawak's been a real leader on. We have recently stood up a GIS program. This is geographic information systems or system mapping of utility facilities and, and utility infrastructure. This is a, something that is a really important component of having an effective outage management system. So another thing that Econamawak has led on is, is having a system where if customers go out, they can relatively quickly communicate with utility. They can see who else is out. Utility can communicate on expectations for the duration of the outages. It also helps on the operation side for field staff to understand where the outages are and to be able to sort of systematically address them. This program we set up, we hired a GIS technician about a year and a half ago, and the program has taken off. We think we're going to be hiring our third GIS technician next year. The cost of this program is all paid by members who participate in it. And Econamawak is really the anchor participant in this program that allowed it to go forward. It really wouldn't have happened without, without the assistance of your utility. And it's been a great success. Just talk very brief, briefly then about energy policy advocacy. We have a team at WPPI that I have lobbyists who reports to me, a government relations person, person who spends a lot of time in the Capitol, in Madison. We have similar relationships with our trade associations in Michigan and Iowa. We have staff who interact regularly with the regulatory agencies in Wisconsin, the PSC, the DNR and others. And we have folks engaged at the federal level as well on, on important policy issues for our members. The two that I have cited here, tax exempt financing is, is obviously a key for all municipalities in financing projects. WPPI uses tax-exempt financing as well. And we've done a lot of, a lot of meeting with and lobbying of folks in DC on keeping tax-exempt financing in place. We've been successful to date, but it's always a challenge. And then we're also looking ways, for ways to make your life simpler at the Public Service Commission. And we've worked with them on the concept of a simplified rate case for the electric utility. It's a similar process that currently exists for water utilities, but we'd love to see that put in place. There's a bill that we're, we're working on to try to get introduced and get some traction perhaps yet this year. Right, and then last, just sort of turning back to the, the comments I made about the importance of member involvement and, and member engagement in WPPI. This is like the murderer's row of good help from WPPI members. This is, was taken at our annual meeting in September, and you can see a number of award recipients here. John, for going through our joint action leadership program. That's a two-year program, requires three or four days. At WPPI spent learning about, more in depth about our power supply system and financial planning and our rate structures and, and those kinds of things. Lucas, who's, was here, got the Shining Star Award. He was nominated by Kevin for going above and beyond here locally at your utility, which we really appreciate. You know, the stronger our member utilities are, the stronger we are. There's the impressive milestone of 125 years for the Econamawak Electric Utility. Although, looking behind the mayor there, I see 150. So I, I still think that's impressive, but maybe you can save that sign for a while. Light that up in a bit.
Poor utility, electricity was embedded.
Hopefully, it still plugs in. And then Utility Leadership Award, again, for the efforts the Econamawak Utilities has had, particularly, as I mentioned, on the GIS and, and outage management side. Just been a, really an exemplary member of WPPI. And we really like to applaud them. There were many others who received awards at our annual meeting. And again, it's just recognition that we can't do this without our members. So very much appreciated. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for everything you do. And we're just so incredibly fortunate and blessed to have a utility of our own with you and what you and the whole group does. And we have that shining star over there. So great job, Lucas. But we have a couple of comments. Alderman. Oh, a question, go ahead.
Thanks for being here, Tom. And I've said it before, if any of the Aldermen have not had the chance to go out to WPPI in Madison and take the tour, it is well worth the trip.
You're all welcome, anytime.
Question about data centers. I've read an article recently where rates went up over 200% because of that. If one of the WPPI communities wanted to put a data center in, how does WPPI respond? And how do we make sure that our community doesn't suffer because of the choices of another?
We're looking, we're looking at sort of just how to do that now. I think we want to be really deliberate. I think we need, and when I say we, I mean the affected member and WPPI need assurances from the data center, financial assurances that if their load doesn't materialize or goes away, that whatever infrastructure investments have been made, that those would be covered by a parent, parent guarantee or a letter of credit or something like that. We, through the rate-making process, will have to be cautious about ensuring that whatever incremental cost there is would be borne by that customer. And that's something that, you know, this is an area where, you know, the Public Service Commission can be a real partner to us. And that's the way we view it. There are a couple of applications in at the PSC right now. One for the, the Wisconsin Electric Power Company projects I mentioned, and, and one for a Wisconsin Power and Light project. Those haven't gotten through the process yet. I think we'll know a little bit more how those end up, probably end of first quarter, second quarter next year. But yeah, we just have to be very methodical about making sure that we understand all the cost impacts and that we've got them covered.
Thanks.
Alderman Rosak.
But Tom, what percentage of our energy comes from renewable wind or solar?
That's, that's a great question. We have, so the sort of benchmark year that the industry sort of looks at when they think about carbon reductions is 2005. And I think we are roughly on pace to be between 40 and 45% below where we were in 2025, or 2005.
Okay, you're gonna have to repeat that. So we're less than we were?
Yes, our carbon intensity is gone, is gone.
That wasn't the question.
Yeah, the question was, how much are we generating through green energy? What, like what percentage of power? 15%, 20% through wind or solar? I, I don't care about the carbon reduction. I care more about what we're spending.
Yeah, it's a complicated answer. And I can give you a range because I, I should have looked up the number before I came.
That's okay.
But I didn't. But, but what we, what we do is, so we have nuclear as part of our portfolio, but we also have all the renewable resources that I, I showed you. There's a, there's a requirement in Wisconsin of roughly 10% of a member's generation has to come from carbon-free resources. And that, that's been a requirement since about 2005. We, we meet that and more. And because we meet it quite easily, given the resources we have, the, the renewable attributes of those resources have value, and we can sell them off to others who need to meet requirements. And so we sell a lot of our renewable energy credits off to other third parties. And we get value, and then we use that to offset costs to members. So it's, it's hard for me to say what the percentage is because we now have resources where we sold the recs off. So is that really a renewable or not? But if you count those and you count the nuclear, we're in the 30s. I, I can't get much more granular than that.
I could, I just, the only reason I ask it is, I, I usually ask this question every year to the representative. In Europe, for instance, in, in England, they're building the largest nuclear power plant in the world right now that's actually built, being built by a French company. It seems like Europe is a little ahead of us getting back into nuclear. Is there, do you see interest in the industry of getting back to nuclear around the states?
There, there's a lot of interest. We've been, WPPI's been in discussions with our peer utilities, the co-ops and the investor utilities in Wisconsin and elsewhere on possible opportunities. You, you might remember that not that long ago, there was a moratorium on nuclear in Wisconsin. That was reversed a, a while ago. There's also interest in the legislature now in promoting nuclear in Wisconsin. So there's a, a nuclear energy summit that will happen at the University of Wisconsin that the legislature has, has funded. We expect that will happen. There's a new engineering building going at the University of Wisconsin. When that building opens, this will be, I think, one of the first events there. There's also interest in the legislature in providing some sort of tax credit for nuclear to, to cite in Wisconsin. So we're seeing real interest. We're seeing it from the utilities. You're hearing about it from really large data center companies or AI companies. So the, the challenge is it's still really, really expensive.
Thank you, Tom.
That's, that's the issue we're gonna face.
You have a question? Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and your team. We appreciate it. Thank you, council. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve minutes for October 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and moves forward. Next part of the meeting, our comments and suggestions from citizens. If you'd like to make a public comment on any topic to the council, you, please fill out a blue card. I have two of them right now. Please, when I call your name, please come up to the podium. Please list your name, your address, and the community in which you live. And please try to limit it to three minutes or less if possible. First up is Luke Kavieski.
Thank you for your time tonight. I want to give a, a quick update on a couple of activities that occurred over the weekend and then talk about the Village Green. This past weekend, there was a event, TEDx Econamawak, that occurred on Saturday. If you're not familiar with the TED platform or TEDx platform, it is a global platform on a local sage. We had 13 speakers, seven of them coming in from around the country, six of them local, including Craig Shufflebine, Tim Snyder with Bank 59, and others that spread their idea worth sharing, associated with a theme of freedom. So I'm really excited by the end of the year. That should be up on the global platform of TED. On Sunday, we did a fundraising event for the US Wheelchair Curling Team, of which we have a member within this community, Laura Dwyer. That event incorporated Wisconsin Harley, Open Road Harley, and Fond du Lac, West Bend Harley, and Rally Point. With the weather, the ride was canceled, but the, the inside event was extended. And a total of $15,000 was raised to support the US Wheelchair Curling Team and Laura Dwyer in their efforts for the 2026 Paralympic Games. So that is the power of this community. With that said, I also wanted to make a public comment in regards to the Village Green. I appreciate the fact that there was open discussion over the last few weeks associated with what the direction of the Village Green, which is the heart of our community and Lake Country, will look like moving forward, both from a landscaping standpoint and a facility standpoint to support bathrooms for our residents and our visitors. You're going to be asked to give direction to staff. There has been a lot of input. I would ask this body, in the direction to staff, to include the pared-down version of the bathroom on the backside of the building known as the, et cetera, and to include an option associated with the City Hall space within the current walls. So you have options to provide yourself and this community what fits best, those options associated with what could be here in City Hall. You don't have a number for, you don't have a plan for, you don't have any of that information to make good policy decision for the spend and what actually could be made available to support the activities, both on a daily basis and an event basis. I sat here asking staff and asking the mayor at the time for proper information for Collins Street Parking Lot, for the Econamawak Police Station location. Nobody, nobody debated that those locations needed to be dealt with, but how they were dealt with, we didn't have all the information on. And I, I know that you're passionate about that parking lot as well, and you would have preferred to have some information to do the right thing there. Please make sure you have the right information in front of you to make those decisions on our behalf, the taxpayer, before you make a final decision. Provide that to staff. Thank you.
Next up is Lynn Wright. Did you want to, it was a duplicate? Okay. Do we have any other public comments this evening? I must have kept your card twice. Sorry about that. Okay, let's move on. Let's move on. I'd like to entertain a motion for Consent Agenda Items, 7A through D.
So moved? Second.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So passed. Onto our committee report agendas. We'll start with finance. With finance, we want to consider Act on Resolution 25-R3316, approving budget amendments for third-quarter grants and donations received. This is from July 1st of 2025 to September 30th of 2025. Again, third quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as you know, there are a number of items that we don't budget for in anticipation of grants. We bring them to you quarterly as we receive them and as their corresponding intended uses are determined. So in your pack tonight, you have a number of new grants that have been received by the city and their intended uses for your consideration.
Any questions or comments based on the, on the information you've received already? Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved? Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Under our next item, Consider Act on Ordinance 25-01111 to repeal and recreate 27.098 Second Street Lift Station impact fee, schedule and calculations. Council, this change is a first reading. I just want to make sure you're aware of that if you decide to place a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, in your pack tonight, there is a draft ordinance revision, repeal and recreate. In our current ordinance, we have one impact fee that actually has a physical schedule of fees through 2025. There are no further dates beyond 2025 that are, that are included in current language. The proposal you have before you is to reframe that in the same structure as all other impact fees in the city is to index them as they're considered and brought to this body each December for changes for the subsequent year. So draft language is intended to do just that and replace what is no longer going to be served by current language.
Questions or comments from council? I'd like to entertain a motion, please. And if you want to waive the second reading, you have the option.
So moved, waive second. Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.[1758.48]
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Next up, consider Act on Resolution 25-R3314, approving a two-year extension of the auditor contract with Baker Tilly LLP. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current audit firm, Baker Tilly, we went out to RFP most recently in 2022 for a three-year contract, which has an embedded two-year extension option. As you're aware, we have, they've served us well. We've had good service from them. Their pricing was most competitive, both in terms of price as well as technical scoring during the last RFP. They, prior to that RFP in 2017, they were also the successive, or the successful firm. I'm asking for utilization of the two-year option under the current contract. As you recall, we have four members of our finance team that are either new to the organization or new to their positions, and I want to make sure that we maintain the stability of our current auditor while this reform, while this team continues to stabilize and firm up.
Questions or comments from council? Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, Alderman Spiegelberg.
I mean, Baker Tilly has done a fantastic job for us, and I know that in 2022, we put this back out for RFP, we only got three that responded to the RFP, only two advanced because one of them didn't even meet our technical qualifications. So, I'd really like to recommend that we extend this for two years. And then, when we're looking out to the future, we're looking to put this RFP out for a five-year period, and I just wanted to speak to that, too, because as a CPA and a former auditor, it's very difficult if you're only able to function for two years and then it's going back out for RFP again, and then you might get the rug pulled out from you. And I honestly think that one of the reasons why we did not get more than three that responded to our RFP was because it wasn't for a longer, more extended period of time. So, my recommendation is let's do the two years for now.
Are you making that as a motion? I'm just to be for clarity.
I will make a motion that we will approve the two-year extension to Baker Tilly Audit Contract.
Second.
Any further questions or comments?
I just have one general question. How long have we been using Baker Tilly, Steve? Do we know?
It's 2017.
I didn't look further back prior to 2017.
I believe 2017.
Okay, so eight years? I mean, I don't disagree with Alderman Spiegelberg about putting this, when we do it again, looking for a five-year RFP, because two years does seem like a short time, but I also think the point of an audit is to have a fair evaluation of your finances. And if you keep using the same group forever and ever, that creates essentially a deep state auditor who just continues to approve your audit year after year because they know you, they know your staff. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I think at some point, we probably should consider a policy of how long do we use the same auditor without a break? There's other people that do audits, right? I mean...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But like I said, if we're just putting this out every two years, we're not going to get some of those quality companies that want to invest in our city and be here.
So, my concern is right now, we're doing, essentially, we're going from eight to 10 for this current auditor without that structure. I'm okay for this two-year extension now, but I really think that the council and our staff need to look at after this two-year cycle is done, what do we do to get it out for this appropriate RFP to get potentially new auditors in? And it could be Baker Tilly for five years and then someone else for five years. But I think if I look at the city, in 20 years from now, it's still Baker Tilly doing our auditing, that raises questions and red flags for me, just as outside looking in, not being an accountant. So, I'm in favor of this one for now, though.
I had great comments from both of you. I think the other aspect is the stability as we have a new finance director. We have some change in term. That's how Steve and Mark approached it with me when they made this recommendation. But I do think that being in one place too long is not always necessarily good. So, I have a motion. What?
See ya.
April.
But you're not looking at the books, though.
Do we have a second for this? I missed. Second. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Great. Onto protection and welfare, consider Act on Ordinance 25-01109 to repeal and recreate sections within the ordinance 9.02-dish discharging and carrying weapons. Council, this is our first reading. You have the option to waive that if you so choose. Lieutenant?
Good evening. So, in front of you is ordinance 9.02, discharging and carrying a firearm within the city's jurisdiction. There were numerous amendments that we made within this ordinance, so I guess for discussion purposes, if there's specific questions that you just want to lead with, then we can have that discussion. Otherwise, I can try to go line by line, but most of them are a little bit all over the place.
One thing I thought was nice is an Alderman that was not able to make it, Rusty McDonald, made a request for the red line version, and I think kind of moving. Young, oh, Eric did.
Eric did.
Okay. Eric, I thought that was a great thing to do because I think that gave everybody, and so things like this, Mark. I think that if we can do that and they're in the packets ahead of time would be helpful. But, so, kudos to Eric.
Yeah, I agree. It's what I have in front of me to prepare, so it was easy for me to read as well, so...
Questions or comments?
Yeah, at the committee meeting, there was some discussion amongst the committee members and a few other folks about a few tweaks to this. I'll go with the easy one first. What we discussed, Lieutenant, at the committee meeting was on Section 4, Subpart 3, the removal from property, because we talked about signage, we talked about, you know, open carry. There's statutes that cover all this. So, the suggestion we made, and I think you said that makes sense, is as you read into this knives or firearms within their establishment, and then in parentheses, and has been properly displayed, and has properly displayed appropriate signage per Wisconsin statute, I would like to make that amendment to that section. And maybe I do that first, because I do have another amendment to the last section as well with regard to the permitting.
You have the opportunity to make that motion.
Well, yeah, let me, I'd like to make that motion to just make that change, waiving the second reading for that section first and then discuss the permit, because I think there could be some different discussion about the permitting issue.
Second. Any further questions?
Yeah, I have questions about that. I generally, I understand why we're qualifying that, Matt, from the discussion we had earlier. I'm curious, because if it's not posted, so if we don't post it and someone says, "I want this person removed," at what point can you still do that once you've given that individual notice that they're not wanted there and they need to remove their firearm or themselves, and then they don't, then you're able to?
Yeah, so, correct. Under current Wisconsin state statute, basically, a private business owner has the right to put a placard, and that placard has to be a five-by-seven-inch placard that says, "No firearms, no weapons," or whatever it is that they want. That's your notice as a individual with a CCW permit or open carry that you cannot be on that premises with that weapon. The other option is they can give a verbal warning to that individual saying, "Hey, I see that you have that weapon inside of my business. We don't want that in here. Can you please leave?" Your options at that point is to leave or go back to your car, make the firearm safe, come back in. Either notice gives law enforcement the authority to go in and ultimately issue a citation or arrest an individual for trespassing if they refuse to leave the premises.
So, then your amendment isn't quite right, because it's either or. You're saying it requires the placard, which it doesn't require the placard, or requires placard or notice to individual.
So, the placard is the easiest option as far as the state statute reads. So, basically, an individual who goes into a business with a concealed carried weapon and they don't have that placard, they're never been given that notice. So, if that private business owner contacts law enforcement and says, "I want this individual out of here," but that private business owner never went to that person and gave them notice saying, "Hey, you need to remove from my premises," then we don't have any legal standing or legal grounds to basically cite that person, arrest that person. We would explain to them, "Hey, they don't want you here because you have that weapon, and here are your options." And then we'd explain to the private business owner, "Here's what you need to do to solidify the state statute, which is the placard," or physically going up to that individual and giving them that verbal warning of, "Please remove yourself from my business."
Do you want me to amend it to just say the placard or verbal warning?
I mean, if we're trying, yeah, or if we're trying to make it clearer and there's two routes you can go, either put the placard up or tell the person.
Yeah, so, Wisconsin statutes, it's actually 94313-2BM, specifies specifically the two objectives, which is the placard and/or the verbal warning. So, you can either phrase the specific statute to co-line with, to solidify, like, that's what the warning you need to do, or like I like, just leave it as under Wisconsin state statutes.
Because it could change.
We don't come back.
That's better.
I'm comfortable with, I think, the way it's drafted, because it also talks about them objecting or making a complaint, so...
We want to make sure that you have the right authority at the right time with the right notice.
Yeah.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any further comments on this amendment?
This is also waiving second reading for that one as well.
Correct. Any further comments? I don't want to rush. Okay, call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Okay, Alderman Rosick, you said you had another one. Let's go for that.
I do have another one.
If you're a guy teed up, let's do it.
And just so, in clarity, I chatted with the chief beforehand, so we talked about some of these changes, and I'm not going to put any words in his mouth about those changes. And we also talked about it at the committee meeting, but the second section, Section 5, that's primarily changed from the other old ordinances, was requiring someone to get a permit. My understanding from Lieutenant after the committee meeting is we've already taken out the provision that allows people to go to another home and ask for permission to shoot within 100 yards, which was the main safety concern, is that you get three or four houses around each other that say, "Sure, you can shoot," but then they're all shooting within 100 yards of each other. That makes a lot of sense, so that's already been removed. What I don't like about this section is having a gun owner having to go to the police department and asking for some special permission to use their firearms in practice or Second Amendment rights. So, I would make a motion to move, remove 1, 2, and 3, and renumber 4, 5, and 6 as 1, 2, 3. That's my change.
Second.
And there's already...
Waiving second reading.
Waiving the second reading. And there's already state laws that govern where you can discharge these firearms. It's not like we're repealing any state laws. It's still within those boundaries that are required by the DNR and the state of Wisconsin.
Correct.
It's just whether or not there's going to be a registration requirement with the city police department.
Correct. Yeah, and I would just want to clarify so that everyone is understanding, the discharging of a firearm within the city's jurisdiction is only authorized for hunting purposes only.
Yep. We're allowed, yes. We have a motion, a second, and we're open up for comment. I know. Alderman Mulder?
I don't have a strong opinion on the permitting. Is it a benefit to the city in any way, do you think, on being able to issue those permits?
Yeah, so, basically, if someone was to come to us and say that I want to hunt in a specific location, we can at least do the mapping there to specify, here's within 100 yards of a habitable building. We can have that at least on file with our staff, so that way, if neighbors, for whatever reason, may call that they hear gunshots, we can at least pull it in our own records management system to show, hey, we do have a permitting person over here. It is hunting season. And although our response may change slightly, but we may not give an unnecessary emergency response in the event that we're just getting a call of gunshots in the area.
How many permits do we give out in a year?
Currently, there's no permitting process for hunting. It's...
Oh, I'm confused.
You shall be with, or you cannot discharge one within 100 yards of a habitable building.
And that'll remain.
That will remain, correct.
Right.
And you can't, obviously, you have to abide by any DNR rules that there are as far as, so far from a roadway, so...
This is new.
Correct.
Yeah, the permitting request is new.
Alderman Ellis?
For A, you went ahead and you wrote in numbers 1, 2, and 3, 4, 5, and 6 for that matter, which is no person shall discharge a shotgun or muzzleloader within the city unless the first securing a permit from the police chief. All permits are subject to revocation, and all individuals must process on, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't read the rest of it. Anyway, why did you write that? What was the sole purpose?
So, the sole purpose is if you are able to look at 4A, specifically where it's crossed out, we had issues with the 100 yards of a habitable building. However, one was allowed to discharge a shotgun or muzzleloader for hunting purposes if they went to their neighbors and got a written permission. I fielded some phone calls and started looking at some of the areas within the city, and one individual specifically kind of caught my attention in where they were living, and he would have asked, had to ask about six individuals, getting written permission if you could hunt out his backyard. But the rest of the surrounding area is covered with residential areas. It's actually a very populated area. So, we didn't see that it was a safe approach to allow that in the city limits. I did my due diligence and looked around what other municipalities are doing, having come from a different municipality, and just kind of gotten jive with what's practice, best practice right now. And ultimately, when it came down to it, it was just trying to see what could be the safest approach to still allow hunting within our jurisdiction, but kind of putting the burden on the police department to be able to measure it and map that out for those individuals.
Okay. So, if we take out 1, 2, and 3 of that, and now we make 4, 5, and 6, 1, 2, and 3, what is the ramification of us doing that?
So, basically, 4, 5, and 6, if you put them underneath A, it's basically going to read almost as similar to what Section 4B is right now, which talks specifically about bows and crossbows. And that was also kind of unique to me when I was reviewing this, is in 4A, besides 100 yards of a habitable building, written permission, or allowed for you to do that with written permission, when you go down to 4B, it never gives us the opportunity for the hunter who uses a bow or crossbow to get written permission from their neighbors to be able to discharge a bow. So, kind of looking at that from a safety standpoint, we're not necessarily, we're kind of restricting the bow hunter. They can't go and get that written permission. Granted, they have to be 50 feet, or sorry, 50 yards from a habitable building, but we're allowing a shotgun or a muzzleloader hunter to now go around to their neighbors and get that written permission to allow them to discharge a firearm in the city's jurisdiction. So, I hear what Alderman Rosick is saying. It's honestly going to be more universal for A and B to flow almost exactly the same, just talking about two different types of weapons.
So, the reason why, I don't know, you did 4A, 1, 2, and 3 was for safety purposes?
So, again, instead of putting the burden on the homeowners to allow that written permission process, we can formulate a process within our department to allow for that to happen. So, if you were to call me and you have land that's surrounding the outer jurisdictional boundaries, and let's say you have a 40-acre parcel, that written permission process is going to be very easy for us to go out there and map and say, "Yes, this is where you can safely hunt without having any risk of endangering anybody else or any neighbors." When you get kind of closer into some of the residential areas, it gets kind of iffy, especially if you're looking at it over on GIS map or Google mapping, and you can see where the potential risks or dangers of somebody trying to deer hunt or bird hunt in their backyard with these residential areas. So, by us being able to map that out and being able to tell them where they can hunt and where they can't hunt as far as what's going to be safely, that was our approach.
Okay, I'm just still a little confused. Chief, if you can help me out here, that'd be great. So, basically, in 1, 2, and 3, you're stating that the individual needs some sort of, to secure a permit, to be able to utilize his shotgun or muzzle, am I correct?
Correct. That's the only difference. 1, 2, and 3 are all about getting a permit from the police department.
Okay.
That's all that 1, 2, and 3 are about.
Okay.
So, if you want us, the citizens, to have to come to us and get a permit, you would leave those in. If you don't want them to have to come and get a permit, you would remove those three.
What are your thoughts? As the guy in charge, what are your thoughts?
Honestly, I'm fine either way. We had just, no, I'm being serious, because initially, we put it in, and we put it in there because we thought other people are going to call on people that are out there hunting. This way, we have a record of who's hunting and where they are, okay? So that when we respond to those, we have some idea of what, you know, is in that area. But I also understand the rights, you know, of not having to register a gun or basically tell the government that, "Hey, I'm going to go hunt," you know? So, I see both sides of it as well.
Alderman Shellpepper?
I was just going to say, we're removing the ability to ask neighbors to go within I was just going to say, we're removing the ability to ask neighbors to go within the 100 yards now, right? I mean, that's being taken out regardless of whether we have the amendment or not. You're not going to be allowed to discharge within 100 yards from a habitable building, and if you do and you get the police call on you, you're getting cited. End of story. We're just saying that if you do that ahead of time, you shouldn't have to register with the city police department to say you're going to hunt there. If you do it within 100 yards, you're still getting cited either way. You do it outside the 100 yards, you're allowed to do that. You don't have to, you know, ask for, or do any sort of registration with the city to do it. I also heard a comment made about we still want to allow hunting. We don't have the option to get rid of hunting. That's allowed through state law. It's, the question is, you know, around the 100 yards, right? And whether we were going to allow neighbors to give some sort of exception to the 100-yard rule.
Yeah, that's correct, except statutes specifically don't address the firearms when it comes to hunting. It's more specifically on the bows and crossbows for hunting. So for the firearms, the city does have the right to limit any kind of discharging of a firearm within the city's jurisdiction.
Okay.
Regardless of hunting. But with bows and crossbows, yes, the interstate statute, you're correct.
Alderman Rosick?
Yeah, which is why they don't allow rifles right now, and it's only the shotgun and muzzleloader. Because rifles go farther, they're more-
Correct.
Penetrative and the whole nine yards. Yeah, I mean, all we're doing is saying, we're making it safer. We're just saying, one, two, and three, we don't want, I don't want individuals who are law-abiding citizens to have to go and get a permit from the city to hunt legally on the land with their firearm, who are legal citizens of Wisconsin. And they have the right to do that, they shouldn't have to go register. That's my, that's the purpose of the change, and Chaz said it perfectly, too.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions? And we, the second reading was waived, correct?
Correct.
With no further comments, would you call roll, please?
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Thank you, lieutenant, thank you, council. We're going to move on to-
You have two amendments, then you need to approve the entire ordinance as amended.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Like to entertain a motion, please, and consider waiving the second reading as described.
So moved, waiving the second rea, first reading, or waiving the second reading, thank you.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Because we, the other, we did it backwards, we did the two amendments first, that's why.
Yeah, I just would say, I mean, I don't know if it's a, you know, significant substantive changes that are being made, but is there value in just doing a first reading so that we're putting it out to the community, what we're doing, and then implementing it the next one? I mean, obviously, I know it's another agenda item.
It's fine, whatever you want to do.
We didn't have the red line version completely posted in the packet. You know, it'd be helpful to-
I agree with Shellpepper.
I respect that.
I will retract my motion.
As the second is retracted, so would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved, this is the first reading?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
As a point of order, I believe the motion was for the dual amendments to-
Correct.
Just, okay, to the ordinance. Just for, just so the record's clear.
Yep. On to Public Services, Consider Act on 25-R3319, approving the engineering services for extending Lake Bluff Drive. Mr. Herzog?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. The item before you tonight is a kind of a continuation of our discussion over the last couple of years in advancing the project for the extension of Lake Bluff Drive. We've spent some time this summer and fall engaging conversation with the DNR for the possibility of permitting through the wetlands and the property that the city owns in this area in between North Lake Drive and Yosemite Drive. This is a portion of our effort to try to work with our city engineer, WDNR. And at this point, I'd like to propose continuing to work with Rukert Milke in the capacity that we can complete the application, submit the permit, and continue executing our plans for construction. The impact is listed in your packet there. This is a estimated, kind of a real rough estimate right now as we're completing some of the details of this project, about a $2 million project. Usually, try to estimate engineering around that 10%. So that'll be around $200,000, and working with our city engineer, I feel like we're in a good position for offering the services for about $90,000 or just under that, which is in your packet there. So I think it's a good value for us. This is in return of some of the efforts that were done almost 20 years ago by Rukert Milke in developing plans for the city, but the city never advanced the permitting at that time. And really think we're in a good position here. Truly want to, our objective on this effort was to really make a net zero change in the environmental impact, and in fact, try to improve some of those circumstances with this project. So if you've got any questions, I'm happy to-
Alderman Mulder?
Yeah, this is a District One roadway improvement and a conversation I've had with constituents for six years, because it's been out there for a long time. And I think that through conversations with you and understanding of how this project would proceed, I do believe that the stream bed that goes through there would be improved, not deteriorated by this. So I think that, of course, there's environmental impacts everywhere. I actually think in some ways this will be a positive. There are always concerns of critters crossing roads, getting run over. We can't avoid those, I understand that. But the trout stream that's there will be improved. This is, I think, a necessary roadway, is with as much development has gone on in the northeast part of the city. And the current routes that are taken are going down roads that weren't intended to cover them, much like, you know, Valley Road on the south side of town has traffic issues on a road that's not right for its traffic level. So, you know, I have a number of constituents that are not in favor of this because we'll put traffic going past their house, but we do have to think about, you know, what's right for the entire city. And I think that there's a lot of benefits in this, you know, despite perhaps creating some traffic issues for people who may not want them. So I'll be supporting it.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Herzog? I'll, I'd like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
On to Plan Commission Items, or Consider Act on the Preliminary Plot for Weston Lake Acres located at the southwest corner of Marx Road and Redland Road, west of Weston Meadows 1 and 2. Mr. Gallo?
I have another PowerPoint for you. Why everybody's here? So we have a preliminary plot for Weston Acres. I didn't say Weston Meadows, I said Weston Acres. It's adjacent to Weston Acres. It's on Marx Road and Redland Road. It's for 109 residential dwellings that consist of both single-family and duplex. We all know the location, it's outlined in red there. It's off of Marx Road and Redland Road right there. So we started years ago with this area, we started with a concept plan, and it was kind of a very interesting process. Some of you weren't here for that, I was. We went through and we designed the whole area. We looked at the initial Weston Meadows, and then Weston Meadows 2 came in, and we said we wanted to see a long-range plan. They took our ideas and they created a layout, a general layout. This is not a PD, I'm not saying it's a general development plan. This was not locked in, but it's just, a sketch was provided to the Plan Commission and Council years ago. This probably goes back, you know, close to 10 years. This is when Weston Meadows was being developed. And we took that, and with this plan that's on the screen, we changed zoning. And we, this is the zoning map above. It shows multifamily in the dark brown, duplex in the light brown, and then single-family in the yellow. The land use plan was amended as well at that time to reflect the same thing. So we kind of pre-zoned this whole area for, you know, this layout, okay? So a plat has now since come in for this west half. To finish this up, this is all environmental area, so this will not be disturbed. This area here, ever west of Redland Road, and then there's a little bit, some lots in here, tucked in here, that is part of this plat as well. So what I wanted to do was show you kind of side by side what was approved maybe 10 years ago by the common council with the zoning change and the land use change, and then what's being presented today. It's almost exactly the same. This is the approved plan for Weston Meadows. This is the submitted preliminary plat that's before you tonight for Weston Acres.
Questions or comments from Mr.?
Couple more slides, sorry, mayor. How does this impact the housing ratios? Well, I added in Prairie Creek Ridge, that was our latest residential development in 2025. We're at 60% single-family, 35% multi, and 4.7, I'll call it, for duplex. If you add in the number of single-family, there's 83 of them in this development, and then you have 26 duplex units. That changes the total number, it increases to 10,935. And the new ratios are 64.8 and 34.8. So it gets us in line with that 65-35 that you guys approved to the comprehensive plan. The size of the lots that we're talking about, these are the duplex lots, they're 12,600 square feet. These are some of the single-family, 8,700. So the lots are a little smaller, they're 70 feet in width, though, they comply with the zoning. They're not asking for any exemptions there. Here's some of the other single-family lots. You can see some of them are larger, 15,000, 10,000, 11,000, here's a 12,000 square foot lot. So those are more typical of the SR zoning. We do have an official map that you guys approved in 2022 that the planning department put together. It's on our website. It does show, I took a snip of this area, this big, thick, purple line running through Redland Road. That means 100-foot right-of-way was planned for this area. And guess what? They're showing 100-foot right-of-way. It's a little tricky to see on the plat, so I had them prepare and exhibit. This was part of a certified survey map that was already pre-dedicated to the city. So they're dedicating this area, center line, 100 feet up, so it comes up. This is not part of there, so we can't ask for any more, but the public works and engineering are very happy with the amount of right-of-way. They feel that we can get a nice collector's street in there. So with that, the Plan Commission did recommend the preliminary plat for Weston Acres to the council.
And the applicants are here tonight. Council, if you have any further questions, any questions or comments for the applicant or for Mr. Gallo? Alderman Mulder?
A real quick one, are any of those lots planned to have twin homes on them? Or are they all single, standalone?
No, there's duplex, oh, sorry.
But-
These lots down here are all zoned duplex, and these will be duplex here, this whole row right here. This is going to be multifamily. They did show that on the, that concept plan that was approved, and zoning's in place. This, now, in the, this zoning, they could do single-family. The applicant is here, if we want to ask them. But this is zoned for duplex, they're a little bit larger lots. They have similar on the opposite side of the street as well. But those are shown as duplex lots.
If you wouldn't mind coming up and kind of sharing your vision, what your plans are with the council, that'd be great.
Hi, yes, I'm William Gentle with Home Path Financial. Yeah, as he said, these are going to be duplex. That's our intention, is to, is to just to make these, this row duplex to keep it the-
And so not the twin homes where they have their individual lots, but are sharing?
Correct, yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Yep.
And these, when he was talking about these being multifamily, the plan is to have eight-unit, single-entry condo style, condo ownership.
Other questions or comments from the council on this preliminary plat? Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
On to new business, Consider Act on the bidding project scope for the city green improvements. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, mayor. Obviously, from, you know, the listing sessions that we've held, and we've received a lot of input, different ideas, different thoughts of how this should be, but this was a directive from the city council when we came to them, talked to them about the potential proposals that we're looking at right now. The plan was to be able to come to this meeting and get some direction from the council as to how staff should be proceeding. Now, a lot of options out there, and so this is a council decision on what your thoughts are. One of the things I want to make everybody aware of is that no matter what work we do, whatever project we bring back, we're going to need six votes from the common council because of the revenue sources that we're doing. We'll have to do a budget amendment. So we got to be clear, you know, and hopefully, you know, that we get a voice of, you know, support from whatever the idea is, or whatever the direction is, is that it's got a good likelihood that once we go through and spend money and do some engineering and get some pricing and everything, that we have a project that could ultimately be approved. So you have a lot of things to talk about. Jason Herzog's here, I'm here, we can answer any questions, but, you know, look and think what you think is going to be best long-term for that area.
So we had a lot of discussions in the open session, which have been wonderful and well-appreciated. My recommendation is that you guys talk about it before anyone makes a motion or jumps into anything too quickly. I would say, where do you want to go? If there aren't going to be the open discussions, then you have all the options. You have full control of where this goes.
Well, I can kick it off. I do have some pushback against the general consensus that the bathrooms are like this city requirement, that we're absolutely responsible to provide. I mean, I work in downtown Madison by the Capitol. I can't think of a single city restroom that's in that area, that's on State Street, at all. So I, you know, I push back against the notion that we're obligated as a city to provide restrooms. I just, I disagree with that. But if we are going to go down that route, we do decide that it's something we want to do for bathrooms. I just haven't seen any sort of consensus or support for the public-private partnership aspect of the bathrooms that are being presented. I think we've seen that there's other options for scaled-down versions. So I think, you know, the way I look at it is, is that we've got to, you know, I'm not interested in supporting to go out for engineering and spending any additional costs on the concept of the private-public partnership proposal. So, you know, I wouldn't support that. I mean, if we break it into two different motions, you know, maybe there's some way we can get around it to be able to go out for a bid. But I just, even tonight, I just don't think we have the information we probably need for the scaled-down version in order to give the direction to the city to go out for the bid at this point. I mean, I could be wrong, but I guess that's where I'm looking at it from that perspective. Do we have an idea of how much it's going to cost to get the bids? I mean, to be able to go out to a point where we can go out for an RFP? Do we know how much that will cost the city at this point to do that, or generally?
Well, and, well, Jason's walking up to the podium to correct the answer I'm going to give you. It comes down to scope. You know, we, like Jason mentioned, you know, we look at, you know, design costs being 10% of potential construction costs. And, you know, if you're building smaller restrooms, it'd be lower cost. I'd like to say that the park portion of the project itself is, it's, we've bid it. It's designed, we'd have to make some changes to fit the new layout and add in the parking lot, so we'd have some money there. I don't have an exact number or a good number. I don't know, Jason, if you've got a ballpark. It's just very difficult when we don't know the scope of what we're talking. It's a different situation if you're going to build this project that, you know, we, Kevin got the 3D model made for, or if we're looking at two really small restrooms in two different locations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good point, and I think you started it off kind of in the correct direction in narrowing down what you guys think is collectively the right idea. If a private partnership is off the table, that narrows up what we can really move, start moving in the right direction. The park project has been bid, you guys considered that before, so we have a lot of those good concepts to recommend and to work with. But yeah, understanding what the building is. To your point, if we need to better describe- To your point, if we need to better describe that back area, that's, that's fine. We can definitely do that and provide more engineering detail, pretty small scale. Like, if you're just asking for footprints, floor plans, those types of things, it gets a little more expensive to produce 3D modeling and, you know, advancements from that. So, you know, if you're asking just to look at a two-dimensional drawing, can we put together one or two different layouts with the engineers involved, probably looking at, you know, a few thousand bucks? If we're wanting to do 3D modeling, you know, you can double that or something. So those are types of figures that you're looking at.
Yeah, I like the scaled-down version, and I think it would be prudent to go to bid for this, not only the scaled-down version behind the former Lakers building, but also, I mean, having a second option over by the City Hall. You know, I guess I have concerns about going within the current building as it exists. I, you know, I heard someone say, we don't want to expand the size of government. There's no reason that we should grow, you know, the city government anyway. But I would guess my response would be like, God willing, City, Condamawake's going to be here for 1,000 years. I mean, literally, I mean, hopefully more. So, I mean, to say maybe right now, we're not going to, but in 100 years from now, 200 years from now, I mean, we should preserve the option to do that. And so that, that would just be the pushback I have there. But I would like to see, you know, another, to be able to go out for a second option of having a smaller pared-down location of the restroom. I don't know if it's in the Sallyport itself or on the side of the City Hall or whatever, but in that location. So I think that's the feedback that I have generally.
Mayor, did you want to go next?
Yeah, I, I have a question. If we decide to go for the RFP and we get those RFPs back, is that nailing us down to just that drawing or that project?
If I understand everybody correctly, I think the layout or the structure that we would want to do is to try to narrow this up, get a decent scope of, of work, maybe one, maybe two options, to get floor plan ideas. And then, once we bring that back to you, you can say, yes, we would like to go with option A, or option B, or maybe some variation of that. And then it'll actually take, taking that idea from a two-dimensional drawing, putting it into, you know, full architecture. If we're eliminating the part, private partnership, you know, that's a huge swing of where we want to go or can go, because we were definitely working with, you know, multiple architects at the time. And understanding that if this is a 100% city project and working with our engineers, our architects, will engage, you know, some true engineering. So it'd be almost the second round that we would be getting those types of completed plans and sending out for full construction. So if I'm understanding this right, we want almost like a preliminary cost estimate before we go all-in in the full design. Is that what I heard?
Yes, so the way I see it is that I decide I want to buy a house. And I go ahead and I look at this house, 20,000 square feet, five bedrooms, just gorgeous. I mean, just to the, to the nines. And my real estate agent comes to me and says, this could be yours, just sign here. Whoa, whoa, what, how much is it? Well, it doesn't matter, just sign. I want to make sure that I can afford it.
Sure.
So if you're stating that by us requesting an RFP, this is only preliminary.
That's what I would call it.
I'm in. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion.
Don't make a motion yet.
Don't make.
We all, we all haven't had a chance to talk.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold.
Alderman Altman Clof.
I have a lot of scribbly notes, so I apologize. So my first question, though, the, if we were to do the bathrooms right there, would those be year-round?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we asked that at one point, and I apologize for forgetting. So I know during different renditions of bathrooms, I know I have, in the past, kind of pushed for scaling it down, because at the end of the day, we know that for bigger events, we're going to have to bring in porta-johns. I have to say Laura Gibbs' presentation today really kind of made me rethink a lot of what I was thinking on what works for here. Putting in two sets of bathrooms, while I could sort of get behind it, I worry about the price tag on that. I think going forward, I would like to see, I guess, let me back up for a second. At the end of the day, we're not going to make everybody happy, and we know that. You know, and that's obviously, you know, the balance that we have to make is, you know, being part of council. And, you know, and I agree, you know, smaller government is definitely better, but we do have people, you know, we have city employees that are doubled up in offices here. We have city employees that work out of closets. So to say that we may never expand City Hall, it's not about expanding the size of government, it's about giving people adequate workspaces. So that's definitely something that we have to kind of keep in mind in the future. And again, hold on. You know, someone convinced me to get away from paper and pen and go to one of these things, and, you know, it's all funny games until you have to scroll. Sorry about.
I've got real paper.
I'm going to go back to real paper. I would be interested in exploring a smaller footprint bathroom. Oh, this is what I was going to say, going back to the, the private-public partnership, though. I think right now, you know, and Alderman Rosick talked about this a little bit earlier, you know, it's kind of a bad, you know, it has a bad rap right now, what we just came off of. And not all of us on council agree that what went down with Buddies was awful. You know, recently, I talked with our Park and Rec Director that said, you know, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot tonight, Eric, but maybe in the future, just kind of lay out, if we would have done that building on our own, what would those costs have been under, under the rules of city government? Because we know that it would have been much higher based on how we can operate compared to how the private sector can operate. So there's two sides to every story, and, you know, what happened with Buddies may not, you know, whatever. We don't need to rehash that, but now I just completely lost my train of thought. But Mrs. Gibbs really just threw me today, because I really like her idea. I just don't know how I feel about two sets of bathrooms, so I need a second reading on that one.
Alderman, Alderman Spiegelberg.
And, you know, I can appreciate Chaz's comments. We're not obligated to put bathrooms down there. However, I think it would be a disservice to our citizens and to our visitors not to have something there. And I think the Village Green or the City Green area is the best place for that, because I'm thinking, okay, I bring my mom downtown in a wheelchair for things. If we're on the Village Green, City Green, and she needs to go to the restroom and it's way over by City Hall, I don't think that's happening, nor is that happening with my grandchildren or my kids who are here with, you know, their little kids. Anybody who's here with their little kids are doing something down on the City Green, and now they've got to go to the bathroom way over by City Hall. So I, I think we can all agree, I think, Chaz, you even come around to the fact that you, you're okay with having bathrooms, that we would have the bathrooms there. Overall, I wonder if it would help us tonight if we can kind of compartmentalize our decision. I think we all pretty much like what's going on with the separate City Green part of it. Would we be able to advance that part forward, but take a step back on the concept of the bathrooms? Because now we're up in the air with the public-private partnership. We're up in the air with how many bathrooms do we want there?
But if you don't, if you don't put bathrooms on part of this building, that changes the infrastructure in the Village Green substantially. So, you know, you still have to put in sanitary sewer.
Not to say that you can't, but I would highly recommend, if we can devote some time to the idea of making this one, one project, I think you are definitely better off.
We can still do two RFPs, but having, once you know that, hey, this is what you think you want, then, then taking those next steps. And I think that's really what the staff would like to have us come to. Maybe it's not tonight, maybe it's.
And I understand, and so I was just trying to see if maybe in some way we could move forward with part of it. But, you know, I've been a big one for not keeping on kicking the can down the road. But I guess I would love to hear from everybody else on if we need to get some more information before we decide exactly what we want this RFP to look like going out.
Yeah, and I've, and I've admitted that through this whole process, is that I'm willing to share more, better, you know, illustrations and better things, but, you know, I'm real hesitant to spend any more money on this project if I'm just like chasing this idea this week. So I want to like really narrow this up, and then we can really take some time. And if we need more 3D modeling, you know, the high school group is always willing to, to offer, apparently. And they did a, you know, a nice job with responding to Alderman Ellis. And so those would be real, like, recommendations that I would have, just seeing, you know, we've explored this over here this past year. We, that, you know, obviously, that gave us the results it did. We've talked about the bathrooms being on the side. I think we've seen some advantages and disadvantages with that. Now we're exploring the back, you know, once again, so, you know, and if we narrow this even down even more, I think we're moving to more of a consensus, and then, you know, finding the right floor plan, the right number. I think we're, you know, within one right now, from what I'm hearing. And then deciding what to do with the trash enclosures. Do you guys want to keep, you know, sharing your thoughts? I'm just trying to summarize as we go.
Yeah, the most cost-effective is to do it when you have something you really like. Plus, because we need the funding, and you have to have a supermajority for that vote, we want to make sure we don't spend any dimes or nickels until there is a high likelihood that it will pass if the numbers work and if it's good for the community. So that's really kind of where we are. And if maybe tonight's not that night, and you have to bring some other things back, we're happy to do that. You have a proposal here that is one option. When Laura and her group brought it on Thursday at that meeting, I said, hey, this is a viable option. And I requested that she put this in here, because there is a group of people that did it. The hardest, the most difficult thing is to know what do people really want, and we always struggle with that. Even these listing sessions, frankly, and these discussions were poorly attended. When you look at the size of the city of 20,000 people. So that happens with a lot of stuff. It isn't necessarily this project, but we've seen it in other things that we've done. It doesn't mean that we don't do it, but it's, it's tough to figure it out at times. There's, I think, you said, there's, we're not going to have everybody happy, Jennifer. You're exactly right.
You know, oh.
Go ahead.
Did we, same time?
Go ahead.
I guess what I would like to see for an RFP, if we could do it, if we obviously agreed, would be one for, everything Village Green that you, you know, you showed, the, you know, the hardening of it, the landscaping, the rain gardens, all of that. A bathroom footprint that Laura and her team showed. But then, could we get it in, you know, like, two separate RFPs? Like, one with that bathroom, everything else on Village Green, and then like an add-on with that extra bathroom over by Oz Plaza? So that, you know, if the numbers didn't come in quite how we wanted, we could then just say, we're going to hold off on that Oz Plaza bathroom till a later date, but at least get the Village Green. At the end of the day, my biggest thing that I want to see done, and if it means scrapping the bathrooms altogether, is redoing Village Green and protecting it. At the end of the, I really, I care about the bathrooms a little bit. I care about protecting Village Green 1,000 times more. And kicking the can down, which I agree, we can't be, we can't keep doing. Village Green needs to be protected. We should be more passionate about protecting Village Green on whether or not we're going to give our citizens a, what, third option for a bathroom if they're walking around Fowler Lake. So.
What do you mean by protect it? What is, what, under what?
Like, the, the bollards, like, the, you know, so you can't drive a car through.
Protecting it, not.
Protecting it.
Okay. Keeping it safe.
Oh, sorry, public safety, sorry. Thank you, Matt, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
May I have my turn now that Jennifer?
You bet, you bet. My turn.
So I, I, one of, one of the residents commented that, that it's, you know, it's a pinch point there, because there's all these people right there behind, and then we don't want to put the bathroom where all the people are. The people aren't over behind the police station, where the police station used to be. They're here. Like, I realize there's a few people at Oz Plaza that would use it. When you're walking around the lake, I walk around the lake every single week. I've never, ever gone over there. The, the boat launch is no closer to those bathrooms than it is to here. We'll put skating off of here in the future, because now we have access, and that's where we want the bathrooms. It doesn't make logical sense to put them down at the other end, where there's already bathrooms inside here, and nobody else uses that space. Oz Plaza, I get it, there's people there. Most, so I'm not saying there aren't any people down there, but the people are here. The larger bathroom with seven stalls can be used for things like, I think, the paddleboard races, you know, maybe the Chili Fest, times where there isn't hundreds and hundreds of people down there. Beer gardens, we would never want to build any kind of bathroom that we don't need to bring in porta-potties for the kind of events we have. So it's, I think it's bigger than we need for most days. Most days, I think, two stalls, even in summer, Thursday afternoon, two stalls is probably fine. If we want to have enough for those mid-sized, then I think going with the, the plan. And I think to not explore the public-private-public option would be a mistake. It, it could come really favorably for us. The sightlines, they aren't, there's no sightline issue. There is zero sightline issue. Right now, if you stand on the corner of Wisconsin and Maine and try to see the lake, you can't, because the, the gardens are so high. So we're actually creating a lot of visual for the lake, not taking it away. And then, could you, could you show where this whole street or the whole site scape of that? I forget which one that is, where we get to see the whole, the whole view of it. Yeah, that. I mean, I think this should, we should aspire to this. Whether or not the bathrooms are two stalls in the back, we don't do bathrooms at all, like, this completes the park as well, right? It's making sure that we get the facade, the side of that, that building to look like that. And I'm not saying it needs to be exactly like that, but to get it looking cohesive and completing it, because it is an entire wall of our park. You know, so I, and if we don't have a private, public-private partnership on the balcony, then we can use our facade grants, maybe an enhanced facade grant to work with the owners to do some of that work. But to me, not exploring that, you know, seems like perhaps a missed opportunity, because I can tell you that you'll never get one of those tables. Their community's going to want to eat their pizza at one of those eight or 10 tables. So it would certainly be hugely popular.
Tables you're talking about?
The ones on the balcony that would be created.
Oh, now those are city tables? Because it's my understanding, there was no sort of definition around who actually owned those.
Those were not city tables.
Yeah, so again, what, why do I want to spend city money to build more tables for the restaurant?
And I'm saying that's why we explore the, that's why we explore.
No.
They're like the tables, they're like the tables up by Grill 164.
I'm sorry, I'm not being clear. I am talking about the restaurant tables that would be above, that the et cetera would use.
The existing ones or the expanded ones?
The expanded ones, that would go, that would go on top of the bathrooms.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
So Alderman Mulder makes a lot of great points, and I think, you know, we got a lot of input from people. We probably wish some of those listening sessions would have been a little bit more well-attended. But I think we also need to keep in mind that there were a lot of people that looked at the original design of this and said, we love this, let's do it. So I think we need to keep that in mind, too. There were a lot of people that were in favor of doing this exactly the way it was first presented.
Alderman Rosick.
Well, boy, I think we, we've kind of worked ourselves into a frenzy a little bit over this. I, I don't get, I don't get, and I'm with Mulder on this, I don't get why we're starting to talk about bathrooms by City Hall right now. Makes no logical sense to me right now. That could be a separate project. If we, if we think that there's a future need for bathrooms there, let's, let's, let's cut that off, let's talk about that at a future point. If there's more development, if the enterprise building gets developed and there's something cool, then, then maybe we do something there in the future. People stop at Oz Plaza, but they're not hanging out there and eating all day. This center, like Matt talked about, is where everyone is, is congregating, is getting food, is getting stuff from Roots, is getting ice cream and hanging out in that area. And when we redo this park and we expand the boardwalk, there's going to be even more people hanging out. people hanging out in that area and they're going to need bathrooms there, not on the ends of Oz Plaza. And I've talked to people at length about, that have had some, some questions about saving the City Hall space. That's not about expansion of government, that's actually about being fiscally responsible. If there's a future need for expansion, for whatever reason, the state government says we have to have, we have to hire 10 social workers, or some law is passed and we have to have, house 10 social workers here to help our police department, or some insane thing is done, and we can't house them here because we use the space for a couple toilets, we're, we're spending millions of dollars. Our, I don't, I don't remember what our police station refurbishment was, 12 million? 15 million?
12.
You know, so, but if you look to add, you know, 10,000 square feet somewhere else, it's going to be extremely expensive. So we should save that space for that. I, I think we should split up that discussion. Bathrooms there maybe someday, fine. We want to have further discussions about that, great. But what we're talking about is the overall Village Green area. Once we start digging the holes and we start doing the work there, we're going to want to put in our lateral lines, our water, our electric and do these full-time bathrooms here. If we don't want to do the bathrooms here, fine, but that decision needs to be made. Whether we put bathrooms somewhere else in the future, I, I don't care. I don't think that should be part of the discussion today. It just makes zero sense to me. To the point of how many people have come out, I have 5,000 people plus that live in my district. I've heard from zero in my district about bathrooms. Whether they want them or don't want them, or care about the design or don't care about the design. I put stuff out on Facebook, I had a few comments. Eric and I did a listening session out in my district, we had one person show up. So, you know, I, I just, I don't know how passionate my, my constituents specifically are in my district about this design one way or the other. So it kind of leaves me out in a lurch. Do I listen to, you know, the 18 or 19 people that have showed up to listening session that have a very different viewpoint? Or do I have to rely on what I've done in my constituency for a lot of years? There's 20,000 people in the city and we've heard from 15, 20, 30? So that, that makes it really hard on us when there's not tons and tons and tons of feedback. I do think what we should do is we should, we should create a plan that gives us a little bit better layout on this. I do think the tower should go. I'm just against the tower. I think that's too much, it's extra expense, it just doesn't make sense. I think it kind of looks cool, but it does take away some of the view. It, it's, it's going to cost more money, it seems like a waste. That's government wasteful spending. I do think we should explore the, the partnership more. I agree with Matt, that's, that's a wasted opportunity. We're not building a deck for them, they're building potentially, if we do this right, they should pick up most or all the costs of that structure. The exchange of that, them spending the money to build the bathroom, my understanding of how we are presenting this is they get a lease for the, the space on top to put their chairs. So the goal of this, as it's designed right now, what we've been talking about is that that bathroom should get built for basically free. And, you know, there's stuff we have to do to make sure that that's properly done, right? We need to make sure our agreements are solid, that if there's overages, they pay it. We, we have to do that, we have to learn from some of our past mistakes, but that's what we should do there. And I am in favor though of looking at some other plan there. I actually personally, Laura, thanks for bringing stuff, I don't like her plan. I actually think when, if that plan were to get built as designed, it would be less attractive than what this is. And I think people would not be happy because it looks, at least the view from the other side where the dumpster is, they look like much more basic, simple bathrooms and I think people wouldn't be happy with that. But again, that's just, that's my opinion from hearing from no constituents, you know? But I, I do think we should create some other downsized version, either a very basic plan of some kind just to look at, just to give us another option. And if we can put that out for RFP as well, potentially that's a good idea. Is there a way to shrink this down, de-mass it a little bit? I, I think that's something, at the very least, we should have that option to look at before we just, you know, go forward with this. I, I personally am happy, you know, just to be clear, I'm personally happy with this. But there is some consternation about the sizing. So, and, and is there another option to do two stalls on one side, two stalls on the other side? I still think we're going to have to move the dumpsters.
Yep.
You know, the, the one dumpster, there's not going to be enough, so the dumpsters are going to have to go somewhere else anyway. And like I, I did the back of the napkin numbers, this concept that we're taking up green spaces is bogus. That, the current, the current layout on that side of the Village Green is only about 608 square feet. The other plan with, if you include the stairs, is about 310 square feet. So we're back down to less than one-half of a percent of the Village Green space being taken up with some type of structure. So this isn't like we're building a monstrosity. I really got why people were opposed to the old plan that we voted on back in March. It was huge. And the massing got big and it got very large and took up the middle of the green. This is none of those things. So those are my comments. I'd like to see some other little mini option, maybe kind of like that, but maybe something still a little bit nicer, not just two doors that open to the side of the Village Green. You know, something maybe that's a little bit more upgraded, that maybe kind of looks like this and has a feel, but smaller. And maybe keeping the stairs, you know? But people are going to complain about that too.
Yeah.
Look, if we keep the stairs exposed, we do all the nice building and we do two or three stalls and we leave those stairs exposed and they're wood ugly stairs, we're going to hear about it next. So I think I've said enough.
Alderman Schelp, or Spiegelberg?
So what kind of direction do we want to give staff? And what do we want this to come back again?
Well, I think we have to ask Jason what he can, what he can do with just, you know, some other little drawings for another little mini footprint there.
Well, so, so far I'm hearing, you know, this is an option. A modified one of this, which again, would look a little different if you're saying, you know, two on one side, two on another. You know, obviously the way that they came up with this was a symmetrical way to enclose the staircase and made that look somewhat uniform with the rest of the building. You know, that was their whole intent here is to try to balance some of the unsightly facade of that building and how to dress this up and disguise basically another building next to a building. So I mean, the moment you start introducing some extra, you know, dimensioning on this, you will see it. You will see a staircase here, a bump out, and then, you know, if this is the idea to continue with this connection here, I really liked this when it first got proposed, honestly. I thought that was a nice entryway for both ways. So if you cut this down, you know, for sure you're exposing another level, another dimension to that. So you'll see that.
I don't think you downsize this one. I, I think, I think we.
You're looking for a second version.
I, I think this, this one, there, there's some backing. I think Matt and I are back, are saying that we like this one. And I, I think there's some support for this. What I'm suggesting is something similar to what was proposed for a very, a much smaller, tinier footprint with two or three or four stalls on just one side.
Okay.
Not invading the Village Green.
All right, sorry, I missed, I thought you were going one in between somewhere.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to, you know, do overkill on this. If there's a one between you could think of, that would make sense. But if, if the one between cuts it in half and it's, we're still exposing the stairs, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
To me, that makes zero logical sense.
So what we're looking at is this is still potentially one option, looking for a smaller cut-down version, which would then mean no rooftop, correct?
Yeah.
And it would be, and so that, that would most likely have to happen, and which is fine. But then you're looking at that different version and we still have Laura's version as well, which I've heard the comments. But if we, if we work with Jason to try to get some sketches that are to scale, I don't want to put this to any engineering or spend any money until we decide, guys.
Yep.
So if everybody's cool with that, we can bring something back. Can we bring something back with just different visuals in a couple of weeks, Jason? Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean.
A modified sketch with a smaller, you know, just.
We could hire Laura.
Well, here's one thing about not, you don't put the structure on top, you don't do the private partnership. What people have to understand is that concept is nice that we saw, but then we're, the taxpayers paying for it all.
You're paying for it all.
And it would have to be freestanding too.
It's a quarter of the size of the building.
It doesn't matter if.
It's so much smaller. We don't even know how much they're paying.
That's why.
Well, that is true. The problem, the problem that I see here, okay, I've been, I, I raised my hand and everybody's talking, so I'm going to talk. The problem that I see here is the fact that nobody's showing me the money. At the end of the day, we can go ahead and we can say, we want this, we want this, we want the other thing, but how much is this thing going to cost?
Well, we, we're not going to know that till we.
Well, yeah, but you see, you're, you're, you're putting these, 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 these examples out there, but at the end of the day, we should have a bottom-line figure. How much is the Village Green going to cost? Okay, the Village Green is going to cost, I'm just throwing a number out there, $1 million. Okay, now let's add those bathrooms in. Well, each bathroom, each thing is going to cost us another $2 million. So, okay, now we know the project's going to cost $3 million. We don't want to put $3 million into this thing. Maybe we want to put only a million and a half. So what is that going to cost us now? What, what can we do with that money? Instead of us sitting here for hours on end, talking about concepts, just bring us back some dollars and cents.
We don't, we won't know that.
Why is that so difficult?
Kevin, we won't know that until we go out for RFP.
That's correct. So I'm recommending that we go out for an RFP so that we have an idea, not holding us to any one specific drawing or rendering.
But we can't go out for RFP if we don't have a specific concept to take to RFP.
That's what we're doing right now, is trying to tell Jason what we want him to get on the RFP. We've given him no direction.
No, you have.
But you have.
So I think.
But you have, but every single time we come up with some sort of a, a drawing or rendition, what happens here is somebody says, but what do we think about? What do we think about?
You may not like the process, but the rest of us are, are engaged in it and want to make sure we spend time talking to get the right product for our, our community. So I'm sorry that you feel this is wasted time, I personally don't. I personally feel it's what I'm paid to do.
So let's, let's take a recent example. We did an RFP for something that was voted unanimously to do on the other version with the larger amphitheater and the bathrooms on each side, and it didn't go through because of cost. So what we're trying to do now is really narrow it down so that doesn't happen again. We can still have a couple options, you can have a couple options for an RFP, but unless all of you guys are aligned, this will never go anywhere and all we're going to look like are fools to our constituents and to the city.
Agreed.
And so your passion of how you feel about that, I think we all share that, but it takes us a little bit longer to try to get to that point where we have the best option that you guys are really behind, that I think is what Jason's trying to do. And he's trying to extract from all of us and the community input, what would be the next steps. So I'll summarize what I'm hearing, Jason, and maybe we can get ourselves into a direction. What I'm hearing is that there's, there's value in considering the current representation that's here and potentially still looking at a partnership because we may not be able to afford it by ourselves. There's also a request to size this down with no, nothing above, no rooftop, nothing above, that would then be some type of iteration, Laura, of what you did at some point. I'm hearing pros and cons about City Hall, more negative typically than positive, but I think I would rather see us come back with a few sketches in two weeks, do it again, and kind of come to the point and say, you know what, I can get behind this because we have to spend money to get there, because we have to have the engineering for a qualified RFP so these guys can bid it. And so if we do that, I think we could potentially get a direction in two weeks. Right now, with what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing a direction. Yeah, we can make a vote and we can have it approved, but maybe there's not a lot of support, but still have it be approved. We also are missing two Aldermen and I would really like to have them here. They had great excuses, they felt bad that they couldn't come, so fully excused, and they would have been here for sure if they could have been here. So my recommendation to the council is no action and get some sketches with Jason. We'll take some of this stuff, we'll still have, as a, as a visual, we'll try to guesstimate some of the costs. Remember, when we guesstimate costs, how good are we at doing that? In this market, we are not good at it.
Yeah, that's true.
And whether it's, whether it's a really expensive well that's over budget, whether it's pilings that don't go the way and the soil problems, we're not very good at that. What I do strongly suggest to council is if we ever do a public-private partnership, we have a fixed dollar amount that the city is invested in, that is a not-to-exceed number, period. And then if there are any overruns, any surprises, that's going to be taken on by the partner, not the city.
Yeah.
Because what we have to do is each time we have hiccups and bumps along the way, we've got to improve and try to learn from that. And I can say, we didn't do a very good job on that with Buddy's Beach Bungalow. We also didn't do it with the overruns for the community center several years ago that went way over budget because that wasn't done properly either, in my opinion. So we are where we are, let's just try to figure out how to move forward, but, no, I'm sorry, no.
So I do have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
If we did, if we do the scaled-down version, and we had talked about that before, that needed to be a separate building and couldn't, wouldn't be attached to the et cetera because it's not our property. So is that the case, we would have to, and does that?
It can touch.
It can, okay.
But it would be.
Is there a lot line right there?
It's a zero, because we, we voted on that, remember?
The new zoning for urban parks provides for a zero lot.
That's why we did it.
The one thing you will have is there's stairs there, but there, those stairs are on city property.
Right.
But they're, yeah, they're deep, right?
Yeah.
I, I have to interject, I'm not entirely comfortable with them touching.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Understood.
We, we have a, a example over there where there's some things that are holding the building up. I don't want to go through that.
You won't, you won't be around next time I excavate. You're going to live forever, but not that long.
So as.
Is there a contract out on me or something?
Is the, is the council, is the council good with no action? Moving this forward with some additional drafts, let's look at those. We'll try to get more meat potatoes as much as we possibly can and then readdress this in two weeks, if we have room in the agenda, but we'll make room.
Okay, so just so I'm, just so I'm clear, so I can try to get the right stuff. I mean, everybody has seen this one, not doing anything to this. The modified one would be pretty much extending the stair wall. You know, we could talk about enclosing that somehow, but then kind of utilizing this space right here for bathrooms and/or a dumpster corral. Is that what I'm hearing? So it's ba, I mean, there's not a lot of options with that small footprint, so.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to get dumpsters back there at all.
Yeah, I don't. A single one at best.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Is that all I'm hearing? I mean, if we can come up with a different idea.
A standalone building there with, that's not a deck, that, that is, you know, maybe two stalls on one side, two on the other.
That's better, that's better phrase, a standalone building in this area that does not have a rooftop.
On the backside, not on the side, on the, on the Village Green, the stairs stay there. So we'll look at the stairs, you know? That would be, I, I think that's, you know, the, probably the other option. Because it, it removes us from the public-private partnership aspect of it and gives us the space for at least, you know, two or three stalls there on both sides, hopefully.
And I'm still hearing open 12 months of the year, is that correct or is that changed?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I, I, can I, I did one other comment about the, it's, I, I get Chad's frustration with the public-private partnership because we keep talking about it, but we don't have, it's, it's hard for us to know what, until we have the numbers, what that's going to mean. So I, I guess it would be nice to have some guideline of what, how much et cetera is even interested in. I don't know how we could do that, like, is, do they have like a tap-out? Well, are they going to tell, can they, can we know before the next meeting, like, if this goes over 300 grand or 400 grand or whatever, we're, we're tapping out, we can't pay more than that? I don't know if there's any interest, and maybe they don't have interest until they see the numbers, which makes that complicated. But it'd be nice to know if there's like a high level.
We've met with them and they're happy, and they say, you know, we are happy to contribute, we just don't know what the gap is going to be.
Right.
And we don't know what it's going to cost. We have rough estimates, but until we decide that.
That's a tough part of it.
That's been part of the problem. Yeah, so I can say, okay, it's going to cost 600,000 or a million or 2 million. I mean, you can get it in that range, but then what they're trying to do is look at their margins, their return on their investment, their time of, of that, which we're doing the same. So we will try to get some numbers that we can have some confidence in, but I want you to understand the quality of those numbers. And if we bring numbers and you understand that, I don't mind trying to put some guestimates out there, realizing that there are a lot of people that are going to hold you to a guesstimate that is probably not going to be 100% accurate.
I just don't understand how they don't know what they're going, willing to spend.
They're still trying to figure out what they.
That doesn't make any sense.
They're looking at their whole building because what they really want to do is do the whole building, and this is a part of it, and so they're in a holding pattern trying to say, okay, are we, is this something we can do on that corner? Once they make that decision, they're looking at their whole package, but I'm sure that they know to some level, but that's their, that's up to them. We just have to figure out whether it'll work. And I don't know, this may not work. I don't think that if we wanted to put bathrooms like this ourselves, I don't think there's any way in heck we can afford it by ourselves.
No, not even close.
Because when you look at it, you know, the goal would be just to pay for the bathrooms ourselves, everything on the roof and everything up, that's their baby. We're not paying for that, we're not paying for that steeple, that, why would the city pay for that? So all of those things are up in the air, but we're just, don't know what that means.
They're getting a huge benefit, though, and they're getting our land. They should be paying us if they want to build anything on top of there.
And all of those things are negotiable, absolutely.
But I haven't heard a single negotiation and any sort of offer from them, so.
So once, once we come back and we've got this new concept and we've got the original concept, is there a possibility that we can send both of those concepts out for RFP? Because if we just send the new concept, we're going to see only what the city is going to be responsible for financially. If we send the other concept, too, we can see whether the public-private partnership is, is more of a benefit for us and will allow us to do what we want to do.
That's what we decide when we see the plans, right?
That you can send two, that we can send both concepts?
Possibly. It'll just, it'll just cost us more money.
It costs us more money because every time.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. So what we can try to do is figure out if there's a way to get better estimates without doing the full engineering, which is never what the city wants to do because that's where the landmines are. Those are the things that create the problems. But I think we have a direction. Is there anyone else that wants to discuss this further? And are tentative planned? I'm sorry, there are no comments from the audience. There are no tentative plans. Our tentative plan would be in two weeks, but if we don't get it, it would be another two weeks beyond that. So I don't want to put Jason in, in a hole, so I don't know his schedule. That'll be up to Jason and Mark. Okay, we've seen no action on this item. Let's move on, next item, and thank you guys for staying so long. Discussion of extending the Wisconsin Building Inspection Service Contract. Mr. Herzog, you're back.
All right, thanks. So patiently, our Wisconsin Building Inspection Team is with us tonight. Yeah, they're still with us.
Thanks, guys.
I'll have to get more on board with this WPPI and how to get moved up here, but, so just to kind of refresh everybody and pull our back, our minds back, we, as a city, contract out our building inspection of, and have done this for over 30 years. The city's gone back and used Wisconsin Buildings Services for a number of decades, mainly because they have been providing a great service to the city, and, you know, they're a very select group, very skilled and licensed individuals. We utilize one primary inspector, Joe Tillman, and he's supported by six to seven and growing more, that offer services for inspecting your electrical, plumbing, utilities, building, commercial, residential, erosion control, you know, the whole gamut. They've offered this in the past. The city's kind of contractually worked with them. This last contract was in 2022. I expect ours this year, and I kind of laid out some of the framework in which the permit fees are collected. It's a tiered system. It's a three-tiered system there, listed in your packet, and I kind of showed some of the advancements in which the city worked with Wisconsin Building Inspections over the last 10 years. And it's, it's kind of telling the city in general, this just shows the growth. We have collected fees and have kind of shared this in our past as we just reviewed our fees. 10 years ago, I mean, we were collecting less than 500,000, and in the last few years, we've averaged just over a million dollars. So we've almost doubled our efforts. So obviously, the market goes up and goes down, so we have been able to utilize their services pretty consistently. We offer, you know, a lot of different things for the community, they're very responsive. So at this time, I'm asking, this is a discussion item only, I can answer any questions related to them, they're happy to, to share any insight into the industry or the service that they've been providing for the city. But in general, what I would like is the thought of proposing a longer-term contract to retain their services with maybe a five-year contract with the possibility of extensions. So that's just up for discussion here.
Alderman Rozek.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. That was a good memo. This is one of the first things I did in my first round as president of council back in 2020, is to work with our staff and our inspectors to create this moving scale. It, it was, it was a number I developed to give them protection in, in a down year, but give us upside in a revenue stream as a city on a very, very big good year. And we've had, based on these numbers, very, very good years of permit pulls. In, in the past, we were only getting 40% of the cut of those permit revenues for like a decade plus prior to this. So that change was a, a massive revenue bump for the city without changing actually the tax roll. I mean, we didn't add more taxes, we were just, we were taking more of the revenue from the fees that prior to that, these folks were taking. But I do have a question for, for Joe, if he's, you, you got a second? Can you come up?
You guys have been so patient, thank you so much. I'm sorry.
We should have moved you guys up, huh?
We should have moved, Joe.
Hey, Joe, are you, as far as right now, where the split is at, this 60, 50, 540, are you happy where this is at right now? I mean, is this working for you guys?
Yeah, I mean.
He, yeah, he gave you the nod. Okay, this guy.
Archie says yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not involved in that.
Okay.
The financial side of it, but I mean, I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any concerns on our end in terms of that.
Do you, would you have any issues in continuing to provide, you know, service for another four, five, six years? I mean, is that a problem?
No, I mean, we're, I think at eight now, and we're looking to add additional staff.
Okay.
So, but no, I think we're in a good position to continue to service the community, you know, fully.
Okay, cool.
Alderman Mulder.
This is just a comment. I like, I like the approach, the numbers are outdated. Now that we're averaging 800,000 a year, you know, to have 300,000 plus as the top tier, I mean, you can look at the last few years, we're 53, 54%. It's always going to be there because the bottom tiers are so low. We could assign a 54% flat fee and we'd always get the same thing, so that the risk to them is, we haven't alleviated any risk for them because we're never going to drop below 300,000. You wouldn't expect to drop below 300,000.
Well, I think so, well.
Even in COVID, we hit 425.
Maybe, maybe beyond five years. Maybe beyond five years.
Can I, my one comment to that, Matt, is these numbers don't actually include, and when we first started negotiating it, we were looking at numbers even further back, which was during the, the Great Recession. So '08, '09 is the collapse. Those numbers went down to like.
Sure.
250, 300, I mean, it was pretty low, and, and that's why we created the numbers we did, was to protect them when there's a really low year so that at least they get 60% of that low revenue.
Yeah.
And then kind of, but I, I mean, you could, you could move the numbers.
I mean, I'm fine with it, I don't feel the need to change it, but it, I mean, it provides predictability for us. We can just say 53.5% and we're going to be there, so.
Well, that's the, but that's the average, but that's the average based on how the numbers play together.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
It becomes predictable for us.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's statistically predictable. Yeah, that's true. I never really thought about it that way.
Other comments or questions? Jason, do you have further questions or are there other information that you need?
This was a discussion item only, so.
But I think your request is a five-year.
Can I turn it into an action?
No, no. So, you know, one of the things, you know, we've talked a couple of things, Jason was here, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the refuse and recycling and, and doing the same type of process with them. We have Tim reel down at our wastewater plant that is sludge hauling, very limited. If anybody else out there than the one that's doing it, those we feel would be prime for doing something. I would throw out, you know, a five-year contract with a five-year extension. I understand Alderman Rozek's concerns on auditing, and I agree with you. You know, maybe that's just a five-year and then you go on to a different auditor, you know, just to make sure that someone's checking the previous auditor for you. So I, I can understand that. So one of the things we would do is we'll look at our purchasing policy and probably bring something back at, at the next meeting to do something like that, where I mentioned that, you know, if staff wants to look or has a need or feels that there's a case for doing it, as with the building inspection, as with the refuse, they come to council, council says yes, and then, then we can move forward with it. It isn't just a staff decision to say, all of a sudden, we're just going to do long-term and negotiate. So that'll be one of the things that we'll bring back for this, but I think, you know, we have a handful of things within the city where this really makes sense.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to staff reports. Mark, can you tell us a little bit about utility budgets?
Yes, I am. So earlier tonight, Steve had sent out an email to all the aldermen with the links to the utility budgets. The process is exactly the same as what we went through for the city budgets. We have the PDF, we have the Excel files that you can click on and get all the information. So all of that got emailed out to everybody like 5:00 tonight, and so we're looking at, prior to the council meeting on November 4th, doing the utility budget workshop. We will not be voting on the utility budget that night because we've just had the workshop. We will be voting on having a public hearing and voting on the city budget. We do need to get that approved so that we can get the information of the county so they can do the tax bills. Utility budget will get approved a couple of weeks later, but that's the process that we're looking at. So when you get the information, once again, if you have any questions at all, reach out to Steve or myself, we'll get you your answers and we'll be able to move through the process. I think we did an excellent job when it came to the city budget. I'm very happy with that process, and we look to continue that with the utilities.
And so kind of depending upon whether we bring the Village Green stuff back in two weeks, that could be a very long meeting, so just kind of a heads up, and most, and I think it's probably most appropriate, tell me what you guys think, is if we're going to look at these ideas and things, we should have it in a council meeting, which also has video, has everything televised, and maybe gives people that work an opportunity to come. But we'll have to work on the timing, making sure we have enough to make it worth your time. Any comments from Alderman this evening? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate and wish Alderman Rozek well in his campaign going forward as he and I both advance in our bid for the mayor's seat in 2026.
I have a really brief comment as well. This is related to the No Kings protest held in downtown Econom Walk on Saturday. I want to be clear, I support everyone's right to free speech. This group had every right to protest. They applied for a permit and were not violent. Regardless, I am also free to be critical of what I saw. The group of about 300 to 400 were at times obnoxious. There were persons dressed as pickles, bananas, along with a woman holding a vulgar sign dressed as a character from the fictional Handmaid's Tale. At other times, the group was disruptive to our downtown businesses.